Ida Condon.
Yeah.
Call the Board of County Commissioners for Custer County to order. Let the record show that it is nine o'clock a.m. on November the first. Ms. Cindy, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? Do you mind doing that?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, happy November to everybody.
Happy.
Another calendar flip. Madam Secretary Gady, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Prince.
Present.
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Candy.
Here.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Secretary to the Board, Vern McGee.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
I do not have.
Nor do I. Thank you. Audience introductions. Ms. Cindy.
Cindy Howard. Jackie Bubus for the panel.
Oh, nice to have you. We've missed you. Welcome. She misses one meeting out of twenty and...
She doesn't miss very many. She's very good.
That's right. I don't believe we have any minutes to approve.
No.
No, sir.
Commissioner Items? Commissioner Prince?
I really don't have very much from yesterday. I did speak to a constituent who was whining about snow plowing.
Concerned is the word.
Excuse me. Who had concerns. And when the snowplow went by, it built up on his driveway. And I said to him...
Join the club.
And I said to him, it's really not... It's been addressed before. There's really nothing we can do about it. We would never get anything plowed if we didn't. So unless we have some other plan, that's my... That's what I'm sticking to.
Okay.
Other than that, I really didn't have anything.
Everybody has the same issue. You gotta...
Well, we all have the same issue.
Well, I'm jealous. Nobody called me with that concern.
I'll call you later.
Okay. Good. I don't have a lot either. I did have a phone call yesterday with a gentleman who had a question about why the Commissioner, specifically Commissioner Candy and myself, were so against the logo and the branding and the whole thing.
You got a call.
So, yeah.
I'm gonna talk to him.
That's it?
Basically told him we didn't have a problem with that. We don't care about the logo. We were trying to determine who owns it and who's gonna have authority and so on and so forth. So... And I thanked him for calling and wanting to get the information. He ran in raving. He just wanted to know. So... No. No. He was... He was...
Sign.
In favor of that, but...
He can go use it.
So, anyway, that's about all I did really yesterday. Do you want this yet? Oh, there you are.
Part of the ballot, uh, general election ballot.
Ah.
And it missed the cut.
Okay.
That's too mine.
Yeah. Commissioner Candy, do you have anything to report?
Not really. I'm gonna... I'll bring you up to date on the airport app at the end of the meeting. Like you talked about yesterday, ready to cut dirt.
Good. Okay. All right. Very good. I wonder if we would happen to have any attorney items? I think you got this email from Jackie about the gentleman is complaining about the school. And I had been talking to Jackie about that before. It looks like I'll have to... Write another letter? Deal with this a little bit more. So that's nothing else since yesterday.
Did we all get that letter?
It looks like she sent it out to all of us. Yeah.
I think so.
It was dated...
Read about...
Twenty fifteen.
She's had so many different things here all of a sudden.
Yeah. I thought that was interesting that schools are an area that the county has not chosen to do anything with. I know historically, and Kit probably knows more about this than anybody, but school sections were dedicated for schools. So I think historically, that's where your schools went, was on a school section. But...
Well, they were...
They're on the corner of them.
To generate revenue as well.
Yeah. So now, I guess, schools can go up wherever schools wanna go up. Well, apparently. I mean, the Amish school doesn't have any special use permit or anything else as I'm aware of.
Oh, I remember reading that now. Yeah. It's, uh... I don't... I think they're legit. I mean, it's not a zoning issue that we've never addressed. Now, that doesn't mean...
Well, but the issue here is also that apparently there's some teachers that...
Or somebody's living in it. That's a different issue.
Yeah. They're living there, is my understanding, but they don't necessarily... They don't have their meals there. They take their meals, I think, with the families around there instead. So it's a question of, you know, it's a bunkhouse slash school is how we're looking at it. Yeah. Okay. Good. All right, sir. Thank you.
That reminds me of something I need to ask all of us. Jackie, I talked to her yesterday, too, and about the eviction notice, seventy-two hours to perform. And apparently Ed did get a call from her and he's bringing in a check. So...
Well, Jackie will be poised with all of her tape to close that place up if they don't get going.
So what... When did the clock start? Maybe that's probably...
I think it would've started... The seventy-two hours would've started as soon as she gave him notice that we... There's a cease and desist order and she was supposed to go post it on the property. And seventy-two hours from then, technically, I guess.
I'll be talking to Ed today.
Well, he was in her office this morning.
Was he?
Okay. Yeah. Well, this may be what we need to finally light a fire, let the guy know he's not gonna keep...
It got his attention 'cause he made sure he...
He did surface, but now he's got other issues that he's...
Can't pay it or something.
Oh, he's getting laid off from his job and so on and so forth. So anyway, yeah. So I'm sure Jackie will keep us posted on that. Okay. Good. Thank you, sir. Nothing else? Okay. Administrative assistant?
Well, I just wanted to bring it up for Bill. The Jim Mann called and he was... I don't know if you remember this, but we had a discussion about he wanted to vacate part of a street in Rosita.
Yeah.
And I asked J.D. about it. He brought down a map and showed us where that street was. So I don't know if you want me to tell him to write another letter and bring it before the Commissioner or...
That would be my suggestion. He just needs to appear before the Commissioner to have this discussion again. I was not part and parcel to that.
Original?
No.
Okay.
This was the first I saw of it.
Yeah. I don't know. Do you recall that?
I'm sorry. Which one?
Jim Mann. It was a street in Rosita. It cut between two of his lots that he owned.
Oh, yeah. I do vaguely recall something about it, but I don't... It's actually just up the road and across the street from where Jackie Harvey lives. But he wants to vacate a street.
That the county owns.
So his property becomes contiguous. But I certainly was not part of that conversation. So it must've been before.
I do remember it. And I think we sent him back because there were questions about ingress and egress to the property behind him and his, whether easement was in perpetuity and whether it ran with the land or if it was persona. I mean, there were a lot of questions that, you know, we...
Do you know who replied to him?
I don't remember. I remember the discussion about the easement.
He said no one ever replied to him. So that's why I asked.
And that's possible. We talked about it without him sitting there concerned. Why don't we, you know, I agree. Let's invite him in and let's...
So did the county somehow get rights to all the roads in Rosita?
Mm-hmm.
Every one of them?
We, yeah. We've become the owner of the roads.
Right. So...
What he's asking is probably...
Rosita went away.
Back when the post office dissolved.
What he's asking for is probably not unreasonable, provided he doesn't landlock.
Yeah. You gotta have other people.
Because there's a place behind us and that...
Which could mean an easement through this place.
But he eventually is gonna die or move away or something. So we need to make sure that if he puts his lots together, he's not creating an issue for someone down the road. That's where I worry about. But, I mean, for convenience for him, it probably makes sense.
So what are you looking at? Did it look like there was a problem?
Well, no. But that street obviously was designed to be in access to the property to the northwest of it.
Behind it.
Right.
With the Acapulco Gold.
Yeah.
Oh, that's true.
No drinking or smoking.
Tequila manufacturing.
So I guess that'd be something we'd have to look at. But, yeah, if you don't mind, let's reach back out to him and just invite him in. Thank you. Anything else, ma'am?
No.
Public comment?
Rosita's painted itself into a corner several times before. I would be cautious.
Okay.
They vacated sixty-two streets, sixty... Sixty-some streets when Christensen bought a whole bunch of ones. And it's not an easement. It's a fee ownership by reversion because they were originally created within the corporate limits of Rosita. And then when Rosita de-incorporated, all of their public ownership went to some beneath, which is the government. And that's why you're able to sell properties that are outside the private limits but within the corporate limits.
I see.
But it's always been an issue of do you landlock someone else?
Right.
And then by reversion, they go back to each side or radially occurs.
And that map indicated there was another street to the north, but it looks like it kinda dead ends to BLM lands, so...
You have to look at the physicality of the building.
An easement over there.
Street, too. Then none of them were ever built.
Right. Yeah. And that's what J.D. said, that one street there was never even built. So it's just that county road that goes by Jackie's place. So, I don't know.
I don't know if that's a public comment or not.
It's a comment. It's okay.
What's the fire chief know about something technical like that? Yeah. That's right.
He's wearing a surveyor hat right here.
I don't care.
We appreciate your insight and your history.
Yeah. So we'll move on to staff reports. Obviously, road and bridge. Mr. Hyde shows up. We can press on. Do you wanna wait until he gets here?
He hasn't slept. He and I had a discussion. I don't know what it is.
You wanna talk cisterns? Why don't you do that?
Yeah. That was part of the...
Does he need to be here for that?
Well, we... He and I talked about this particular issue in a bit. I don't know. He, uh... I was asking the... I'm asking the county for some commitment, for some help on the cisterns.
Installing tanker-style cisterns?
Yeah. This one's a five-thousand-gallon...
Truck.
No. It's actually a brand-new fiberglass.
Oh, really?
And it was donated to the Property Owners Association. And now they're gonna install it. But we have to get off of the county road just a little route, just to get the owner's gonna dedicate the property. Or is gonna give easement to the property to the fire department. And I was gonna ask for some help from the gentleman with the sling in writing up the easement and perhaps coming up with an ordinance about cisterns, too. It's a kind of a general discussion.
Okay. What HOA is this particular?
Verdi Creek or Verdi... Yeah. Verdi, I believe it's Creek Ranch.
Where's it at?
It's up at the end of Hermit Road.
Okay.
So it's a fire mitigation deal? And they have a piece of ground they already think they want it on?
Yeah. They do. I've talked to the owners. I went and staked it. I'm gonna donate my surveying time to create a private easement to the county... Or, I mean, actually to the fire department for access. And they're donating the land. There's a little bit of fencing needs to be done and there's, um... We need to...
We'd need to plow a road in.
Well, we just need to widen the county road and provide a pull-off to get to it. And Gary said that they could help with that. It's pretty close to... I'm not sure who's gonna end up installing the cistern, but it's pretty close to Kent's pit as far as gravel goes, so...
Is this a cistern that's buried in the ground?
Yeah.
It's buried in the ground and then plumbed.
Yeah.
Good. Are you prepared to share the landowner's name or you wanna hold off?
Oh, yeah. I have all of that here. You've got it's, um... The lady's name is Barbara... There's been so many names involved in this, but the actual owner, her name is Barbara Opal. Barbara and Valerie, the two sisters who've been working on it.
North or south side of Hermit?
Be on the north. You go up where Wise and goes down across the creek and goes on into Verdi. Makes a left ninety and then makes a right ninety and right on the right ninety.
On the right side.
Morning, Gary.
Morning.
How are you?
Should I be on the map or not?
Talking about sister.
Oh, yeah. Kit and I talked... Kit and I talked about that the other day. You'll admit.
Good. Well, if you don't mind, let's finish up that conversation. That's what you were here for, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, yeah. We can grab another chair.
Please bring it up. Good morning, sir. How are you?
Jim ran over.
Told you to watch out.
He's deadly.
Yes, he is.
Pull up a chair there.
Deadly and friendly both.
How are you?
Good, sir.
You can have the throne.
That's right.
I don't like things with terms on them anymore. You want me to... Just go with the cisterns, okay? I told you a little bit about where it's at. Let's see on your map. I don't know if it shows on there. I don't think Verdi's on there. Just go right up to... All the way up Hermit until it forks to the left.
Yeah. So it would be...
Yeah.
There and then it kinda bends to...
Yeah. It goes to right ninety and then it takes a left ninety.
Right.
And goes past this Schultz place and then around Sampson Ridge.
Yep.
And right there at the base of it, it used to be, um...
Down on the first corner?
Yeah. Right. It was, uh... Oh, I'm trying to think. Phyllis Dearborn's place.
Right.
Is the spot.
Which is back here.
Right. And that's the piece of land.
Oh, it is.
It's on the old place there.
So it would be on Dearborn's old place.
Right on the corner.
All right. So it's below Sampson Ridge.
Right. There's a little drop-off on the county road.
Yeah.
We'd need to get off of that and then a little loop and then back onto it real quick. So it's a long triangle piece that we've looked at. The goal is to get twenty thousand gallons of cisterns everywhere that we can because that's a kind of an ISO thing that we're trying to accomplish to reduce insurance rates.
You're gonna plant a couple of them there?
Yeah. They're all set up so that you can gang them together, but we've gotten one donated. So we're gonna take advantage of that.
We started that.
And then in general, the cisterns, we have recovered and checked all of our cisterns and refilled everything this year to make sure that we have them. We have quite a few around the county. One of the problems that we're having is that they're in places where we've actually had people tampering with them a little bit. So...
Buried ones or...
Yeah. The buried ones, but they have plumbing coming up. And then there's a riser with a cap on it.
So they try to...
Lock those. Well, we've had a couple of locks cut off and, believe it or not, in Fremont County, we had one of the septic hoppers...
Dump into it?
Oh, so...
Just about got it done. He was parked there and hooked up to it and somebody caught him doing it. So what we're gonna have to... What we wanna do is I'd like to try and get some sort of an ordinance passed by the county that provides a penalty for...
Cantering the fire.
Fire cistern. And that's what I was hoping to do.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. And then, see, then that would allow us to put up a sign.
Is it marked red or anything? Is it marked at all now?
They're marked just... They're visible because they come up out of the ground anyways.
But are they...
We'll just put a tall sign on them.
Safe fire department or anything like that?
We're gonna go paint them. And then what we wanna do is put a tall post with a sign on it that says that there's a county ordinance that protects them. So we're kinda trying to get the ordinance accomplished this way.
Do you... Do you have one or sample from any other counties here?
No, I don't. I can't look. Trying to find something.
Yeah. If you can check real quick and see if you can find it. It's always easier to plagiarize than use my own brain.
Always, yeah. Editing is...
Dare we not use your brain, I'll tell ya.
I charge extra if I actually have to think.
You didn't really use your brain, did you? Okay. That's the part that we all use.
Yeah. That's right. You'd be willing to work with the fire department?
Oh, sure. Yeah. Happy to do it.
And then also, I'm gonna write up a description for this easement, but I was hoping to get some easement language from you.
Is that something that needs to get surveyed or is that something that you could...
Yeah. I'll survey it and define it and create a...
Straightforward.
...description.
Perfect.
And then attach it to an easement grant.
Yeah. That's fine. I can certainly do an easement.
Yeah. It needs to define some, uh... We're, you know, we're gonna move her fence back from the county road back to the line, the backside of it so that it looks just like part of the county road.
We need a... Right up, I can go from the B.O.C.C. for donating the land.
Would that be...
And they'll be donating it to us and it'll go to us.
How many, I think it's a tenth of an acre? What is it?
Oh, it's a little more than that. It's probably about a half acre.
Is it?
Altogether. Because it's an odd shape. It's a triangle. So we wanna get off and back on.
And is that right below their driveway?
Yeah. You know, you go into Dearborn's there, it's this side of it.
Right over there. You're going down.
Right. Right at the corner, you dive off at the corner and then turn and come out. We just look at the best spot to do that. I think we can do it without any kind of a culvert because the way the drainage is, it looks like from that corner, it goes out to the east. And then off at the end of it, there's another culvert passing. So I think we... It should work out or not.
So we gotta declare an easement, then?
Yeah. We create an easement and then they would grant it to the... Yeah. They were really helpful to do it. And that's one of the first property owners associations that's kinda jumped on after the fact. A lot of them had those put in at the beginning when they first formed. But this is some people that are... One of their members is buying one and he bought another one at the same time and said he donated, so...
This is... What was the name of it? Verdi something?
Verdi Creek.
It's Verdi Creek.
Verdi Creek.
Yes. And I can't remember what lot it would be on. I'll get all that information to you.
Okay.
And then the ordinance, if that's something that you can accomplish, that would sure be great for us. We're striving to get the ISO rating down and it's all about water and water availability. So cisterns is about the only way we can accomplish it. We can all, um... We can usually get about almost five thousand gallons to a structured fire in our vehicles, in our trucks. But they require that you have thirty thousand available for a flow for a certain amount of time. So if we get the cisterns scattered around, they have to be within two miles.
Make a quick turn then.
Quick turn. Plus, it's wildland, too. I'm gonna be working with the Forest Service a little bit and see if we can get something up by the Alpine, maybe on their property there, their maintenance property. So we're just...
Yeah. And then with the cattle and that?
Yes.
You get to use those ponds that they had for the ski area?
If you can't... We have dry hydrant in some of the ponds, but for now, we've got access to the one in East Cliff has a dry hydrant on it, which is a pipe that goes down into the bottom of the pond. About that far up off the bottom. And the problem is winter, you know? When things get frozen.
But you have agreements for dipping into the Conquistador Pond.
Right. Yeah. We've gotten things worked out. We don't... I don't know that we have anything written. That's part of what I'm doing this winter is researching all those things to see.
With this tampering ordinance, I wonder if we can word that so that it would work for county property, fire department property, so we can put one at the landfill?
Right.
One at the gravel pit? One at the school range for the sheriff's office?
And then all we would do is just cite the ordinance number and the penalty. And that way we could, you know... That's a good idea. Then you could apply it to lots more things.
Then we could use them. We could use that one ordinance for a different...
For different penalties.
You know, what I see these things evolving into is if you had a wildland fire, this is big enough to have a staging area as well where we could park trucks and set up a command center, that sort of stuff. So I'm striving to get... There's room.[1320.22] So I'm striving to get, there, there's room, the people of Corneverdy have been, um, pretty gracious about the use of their lodge up there. And this, we have a system right across the street from that, so we have room there. And that's a twenty thousand gallon system.
Say that's a, is that an old metal tanker?
It's a railroad car.
Railroad car.
The problem is that the market for those has kind of dried up. There was a wrecking yard in Pueblo that was wrecked and all. And so we could get them pretty easily, but then the steel prices went up and they all went to the mill.
All milk.
So now they're coming from Texas. If you want to get one in the shipping, just wipe you out.
Yeah, I, if council's willing to do that and Roaden Bridge doesn't have a big problem with assisting on the turnaround and.
We can go walk it in the warmer weather and see what it takes to do that. The tank is supposedly coming real soon, but I think it's gonna be problematic whether we can get it in right away or not. And it's fiberglass. I'm gonna review it with, uh, the specs for it.
Can we store that tank in the yard down at Roaden Bridge?
Yeah, that would help us.
Pretty big tank.
Yeah, they're not.
How many gallons is it?
It's five thousand, so it's like sixteen, it's eight foot in diameter and I believe it's sixteen feet long. With risers on it, so I'll leave that with you guys if you want to copy that. And then I have some email correspondence back and forth. This I'll get to, so we can have names and so forth.
Perfect, good plan. Okay.
Good suggestion.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you bet.
Appreciate your consideration. And we'll work on that wording. Maybe we could make it just any kind of county facility.
That's what I'm thinking.
Okay, sure.
County owned property or?
Put it at the gate at the airport, that sort of stuff.
Lot of stuff, yeah. Not necessarily just county owned, but that the wording could include your, your properties as well.
Yeah, sure, maybe. Public properties or facilities or.
Yeah.
Something that.
Is it difficult to bury this type of thing?
But Nisa really focused on the fact it's a fire.
Some thinking of rocks, some thinking of frozen ground.
It's kind of a monster up there because, but it's all, they're big cobbles, but nothing is like attached. It's not, um.
You know, part take a, uh, an excavator.
And then that's part of the, when we choose the sites too, is trying to find places like that. They're, uh, they're pretty.
Really, as far as the geologic stuff, it's right at the end, the Hogback Ridge.
Yeah, it's a.
I call it the Hogback Ridge, but, uh, so who knows?
Yeah, that's a, yeah, you don't, you, you try to make that work.
Probably not gonna be decomposed granite, right? And they're like you say, it's gonna be mountain outwork. Yeah, alright, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get out of this chair with the hands in it. Lock your arms on it.
Not easy to do.
Thanks, Kit.
You bet, thank you.
Good morning, Arlie.
How me, sir?
How are ya?
Be careful, we'll get together.
You bet.
Oh, she's buying something.
Thanks, Gary, appreciate your help.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, you can give Cindy a call if you want. Alright. Good morning, sir, how are ya?
Good.
Good. I, uh, wanna say this so I don't forget, 'cause I think about it every day to tell you what a great job you and the crew did on that Hermit Bridge. Or Road Bridge.
You like sailing across that every morning, don't you?
Yeah, under budget and ahead of schedule, man. It just didn't get better than that, so.
I'm tickled the way it worked out.
Good. I hope you tell your guys on Monday morning, we really appreciated that.
I will.
He said Dola appreciates it too.
Yeah, I'll bet. We actually saved them some money too.
I had a lot of positive comments, mostly about the scheduling that it got done early and seemed fairly painless and so.
Did you get any complaints, did you? A lot of people worrying about the time or the roads being, you know, you took really good care of wetting down the roads, keep the dust down. I think I got a lot of compliments on that.
Yeah, yeah, as far as the detours, you know, that people were using and things like that, so. Yeah, there was a few days it got pretty dry and windy, but, uh, no, for the most part, you know, the dust wasn't a big issue either, so. Yeah, it really helped putting that thing together in the yard and moving it out there.
Now you've watered down all the roads here.
Yeah, they're nice in the way.
Really nice now.
Oh, yeah.
Cut them now.
That would've been brutal trying to do that on site, generate electricity and air and so.
Yeah, that would've been a mess.
But I know you guys worked hard on it and I'd like for you to convey our appreciation to them and. Yeah, it's nice. And it was nice that you were able to get in and get some asphalt over that. I thought we were gonna wait till spring, so that was nice.
Yeah, we just got a lucky break, weather wise, you know. Speaking of that project, Jay, was, uh, the city of West Cliff still gonna help out with funding on that, do you know? You know, at one time they were gonna pitch in like five thousand dollars on that, you know, if that still stays.
I don't know.
I hadn't heard that.
I, I, I don't know. I, I thought it was in the budget to do that. Um, I can find out, even give Kathy Reese a call and run a call either way. I kinda remember that it was in the budget to do, help out with that and it's a good point. They need to kick in that dough if they're gonna do it or is it a done deal?
Yeah.
I don't just.
Yeah, I, I know it was talked about at one time and then I kinda got wrapped up in the project and forgot about it.
I'll, I'll call her and break and see if she has an answer for that. I'll find out, I'll get back to you.
We submitted invoice to Dola, correct, Ms. Brenda? Sorry?
Yes, um. Yeah, um, you said there was just a few little things left to do, do you know, have an idea of how much all that would cost?
I'm gonna say no more than two thousand dollars. We've gotta put some fencing back up and then we, uh, had to purchase some supplies for the guardrails, some wood posts and things like that, but no more than a couple of thousand dollars probably. So we're, we're nearly done, you know, we get some of the snow melted off, we'll get back on that fencing. I just wanna be able to say it's completely done, so.
You have guard rail material?
It's, uh, should be showing up any day. We had to order a few things, but most of it we had, but.
And a water gap on both sides, huh?
Yeah.
Well, it looks good.
Yeah.
Just, I just thought, man, there's a success deal that we probably just haven't made a big enough deal about because I could've.
I think about how much CDOT wanted to spend on that?
Yeah, that was over.
Yeah, half a million dollars.
Over three hundred, it was like three hundred and five or ten thousand. They estimated the project cost to be and.
And then it'll be six or eight weeks.
And then we were gonna have to pay our matching, double what we ended up doing this one.
Yeah, yeah, they anticipated, um, that it was gonna take about two months at least, at the very least. And then of course, if we'd had to do that, then we would've had to put a shoe fly around that south side and that would've added to the.
Cost.
I mean, it just, you know, it turned a hundred and five or six thousand dollar project into three times that much. Using that CDOT grant, so, everybody, so.
Yeah, and I wonder, I don't care if it's appropriate or not, but I think we oughta figure out who to send it to and write a big old thank you to, to Dola. I mean, I don't know that people ever follow up after they get a grant fund and say, hey, we really appreciate it, meant a lot to our community and might strengthen our position the next time we sit in front of them and.
Yeah, it was gonna cost the county double if they're going with the CDOT grant, so.
I'll try to hammer out a letter and maybe Brenda and I can figure out who'd be the right person. I suppose Christie would be the one we'd send it to.
Yeah.
Send it to.
Uh, and, you know, just let them know how much we appreciate their support too. Yeah, just a great project. I thought it, I thought it really turned out well, so. Good, well, let's see, Roaden Bridge.
Gary, I had a question. Um, I don't know the road number for, at the Elzy Lane out by South End, down by me. You know, they were pulling a lot of chips out of there and trees for all summer when it was really dry. And so all the, all the road bases out of there. Everybody's been very good at that. I finally got, one guy came to me a couple of days ago and said, you know, tired of bouncing over it. I don't know what you're pulling, but you know, what's the road number on it?
Uh, I wanna say it's one thirty.
Something, I think.
Something along that.
Anyway, take a look at it when you get a chance, uh, pretty, uh, those truck, I mean, they had trucks out of there day in, day out.
Is that north or not north of you?
South, it's nor, it's west in the first corner.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, don't blade it. I mean, you'd just be pulling rocks out of it.
Yeah, I'll have to take a look at it and see what.
It's gonna need some work. Yeah. Yeah, and listen, I'm not complaining about dust or anything, it's just gotten really.
Yeah.
And they're gonna be plowing snow on it and make or tear up some of them, make it worse.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I'll check and see what we need to do.
Good. Other questions, Mr. Hyde, gentlemen?
Got any, uh, what's the, uh, the, uh, you, you're gonna looking at the same budget numbers that we discussed in our budget meeting? You gonna carry over anything? You spending it down to what you planned, everything's going?
Trying to. Yeah, it looks like we're gonna have a balance of around sixty thousand, so. I know I'd like to go ahead and I've been working on a deal to get more rock for next year's chip seal, so. Some of that'll get spent on that. There's still probably thirty or forty thousand ton down here at Gardner that Fremont Paving owns, so.
I get what you can.
Since, yeah, since it's so close, I'd like to go down there. That's where they got our rock for our chip seal right this, this year. And I'd like to go get some more since it's as close as what it is and the price is right. I've just gotta get back with John Young on, on, uh, on the prices.
Spend what you had planned. Okay.
Um, snow plowing. I know Ed called me yesterday and wanted to know what the plan was gonna be to plow the parking lot here. And I said, I, I assume that Roaden Bridge will come up and do that. He was obviously hoping to get it done before people showed up for work. And he said about the time he was calling you, the guy showed up to do it. Is it reasonable to ask, and I understand it was a newer employee that came and did it this time.
Yeah.
To also do the sheriff's office?
Yeah, that's fine. Uh, we've got the time to be able to do so, so.
It wouldn't take another ten minutes probably totally to muck out the sheriff's department.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that whatsoever. I can just get with Shannon or, or somebody over there and find out what they'd like.
Yeah, Shannon come by yesterday before our meeting started and asked about it and I said, well, I said, you know, just give Gary a call and ask him. But I said, we'll see him tomorrow as well.
Yeah, it doesn't take long. We'll just have my guy go over and do that also.
Does the county plow the road between the scale and, um, the sheriff's property? I'm under the understanding that's West Cliff owns that road, is that correct?
No, that's county property.
Is that county property? That question's been up so many times.
Yeah, we researched that dealing with the AT&T tower.
Okay.
And that's actually county property. It's not even a dedicated alley. The alley goes right here behind the back door.
Cause it wasn't?
See, I didn't.
It was the road that I was talking about.
But yeah, I know what you're saying, so I'm just saying that's property. I, I don't know if they plowed that or not.
I don't, I come through here after he got down just to kinda make sure it was up to snuff and I don't think we did that. And if we need.
I didn't realize that was county. I mean, I'm fine with it being county, I just didn't know.
It's not really a road, it's just.
Well, I understand, but the, the issue came up and it may have been before you gentlemen joined us was it got very ruddy. And the town of West Cliff asked me to ask Roaden Bridge if they could, you know, level out a little bit. Or maybe it was, maybe it was someone here and then, anyway, came back to me and go, county doesn't own that, that's town. So I went to the town and they go, no, that's county. So I didn't know if we've ever resolved that, but I'm glad to hear that there's a resolution to it.
Yeah.
That's fine.
I didn't, I wouldn't aware of that.
It may have been even before your time. I don't remember, it's a long time ago.
Well, it's part of our access, so there's no problem with us doing it, that's for sure.
That, that snow that we got night before last, that was difficult to remove, but it was no easy task because of the amount of moisture in it.
Well, it was heavy snow.
It was real heavy snow and then the ground underneath of it was warm when we were getting that snow. It was muddy underneath and. There was a lot of places we didn't, we didn't get real close to the road. We left a fair amount of snow, but uh, when you're dealing with that kinda snow, your machines have a tendency to try and bounce on you because you're running a lot of angle and not carrying much of a load. And they, uh, for that reason, we don't put that cutting edge too close to the road because the road is.
Bucking.
Well, it's delicate. I mean, it's soft and if we get too close and then we bounce, we're gouging to the road.
We need to throw.
Saying you know these things.
Well, the road base will even get soft, you know, because of the amount of moisture, so.
Yeah, I just was thinking this morning coming in, how good a shape the gravel portion of Hermit Road was in today. After that snow was on it yesterday, I mean, you, you wouldn't even know.
Yeah, no.
So it melted off good and drained good and.
Yeah, some of those places that's got minor washboarding, we get snow like that and it melts in and you get traffic on it, it actually smoothes up washboards. And so that snow helps us out in a lot of ways.
We could replace the, uh, uh, that stuff you put on Rosier Road with.
Oh, dirt blend.
Yeah, put new snow.
Well, you know, back to your comment, Jay, about this, we'll call it a street, it's not technically, between the scale and the edge of the grass at the sheriff's office. Jackie and I looked that all up because we had to have an address for the new tower site and it's, that is not a street. It is not a platted street, it's not a named street. It, it's just become a thoroughfare. And it's nice because it keeps the traffic off of our alley, which is right here beside the stone house that comes out at Jackie's office. That's the true platted alley. Well, can you imagine the public using that as an alley all the time? We're lucky to get by using it as a driveway for the courthouse, but.
Well, and the trucks come in the way and they'll come across that.
Well, I know here, a couple of years ago, it developed a bunch of potholes and they brought in a load or two.
I can't remember who it was, it was asking me to check with West Cliff to fill those potholes.
Right, yeah.
That's when that question came up. I'm glad it's resolved. I mean, I don't think, I think it's wonderful.
Yeah, we went up to JD's office. It is county property. It was.
Good.
No question about that. So I suppose it's up to the county to maintain that if we choose to maintain it, which I think we should because it takes a lot of pressure off of the alley.
And we have all the trucks that come to the scale using it, so I think it has to be.
Yeah.
Employees use it to park and I just think it needs to be maintained. Is there, maybe we oughta make it a road?
Yeah, that's a good, good point.
We could name it Gady Alley.
Excellent point.
Katie.
I want all the potholes out of it though.
It's gonna be a tough customer.
Hey, that'll be the next thing, but, you know, DHS uses that quite a bit with their traffic and that's a great point. Well, maybe I oughta look at that. Creating a street in there, give the attorney something to do. Yeah, anything else, sir?
I think that's it. I don't really have anything exciting.
Any big projects on the?
No, we're trying to haul road base in a variety of places, but it, you know, the weather's gonna dictate that, so. It's a, maybe a chance to get caught up in some of that, so.
Uh, I had somebody ask me this here two months ago probably. Does the county still own the big rotary snow blower that we bought ten years ago when we had that monstrous?
It's a nice white elephant, or is it yellow?
Yeah, it's yellow. Yeah, we still got it and.
I thought we did, but I said, I don't know, I'll ask.
It was my understanding, you know, we used to get snow that were owning something like that and it's.
We did that year, boy, I tell you. We had a ton going down Macy Lane that, uh, seal over the top of.
Yeah, it sounded like we were getting outside help from, you know, the counties that, that had a snow blower and then they thought, well, maybe we should own one, but. And I'm certain there's gonna come a same, come a day when we utilize.
Yeah, I agree.
Maintain, you keep it running once in a while.
Yeah, Byron's real good about that. Even though something sets, might, maybe for years and doesn't get used, he'll, he'll put batteries back in it and go out periodically and fire it up and make sure everything's operable.
If you have a need, my store, and I know, I don't mean to mix business and persons, you know, county, but someone has an eight horsepower, almost brand new snow blower, walk behind, self-propelled and all that. I mean, I just wanna let you know if you had any incident, I would do that, just at no cost to the store, just as a pass through to the owner. If you have a need for something like that. I was just thinking about that when you said snow blower, cause it's a massive piece of equipment.
Well, good. Okay, sir, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, next time, take care of it.
I will.
Gary, you gonna be around? Cause I wanna talk to you about the, the staking.
Sure.
You gonna be available after, I'm, I don't worry, we're probably gonna get done here. We'll probably have a noon break.
Okay, yeah, I'll be around, just, uh.
I'll give you a call.
Alright, sounds good.
Thanks.
Yeah.
See, uh. Take about a two minute recess, gentlemen, is that alright? We're waiting for Mr. Christensen. Uh, good morning.
Good morning. Oh, yeah.
Make this official. I'm sorry, I was trying to hammer out an email real quick, but.
And how are you doing?
I'm hanging in there.
You're getting a little bit better?
Oh, yeah.
Did you surgery on that? On your shoulder?
Nothing, no surgery. So far, anyway.
So far, so good, alright.
But today is y'all.
Try to behave yourself or something, right?
Okay.
Okay. I know, I, yes, this is, this is, this is true, no. Okay. Here we are.
Yeah.
We're doing September. And so far, we're, we're doing okay.
Okay. Are you looking at the?
I'm looking at this one.
Okay, that's where I'm at as well.
Yeah.
I got about five, three different documents in here.
I know, there's a bunch of them in there. There's a bunch of them in there. And then if you look at the bottom of that one, where it shows, uh, the tan of, where it says county maintenance. Like our tan of, we don't contribute anymore because we've already put in our, a monthly, or amount that we're supposed to, which is eight thousand.
Okay.
Okay, so that's why it always looks weird like that, but we only had to put in that and then the rest is, is, is my allocation on that. So it always looks bad, but we're fine. And then OAP, we're, you know, we're okay on that.
Still got old people to worry about.
We still got old people to worry about and my August and Septembers were exactly the same, which I thought was interesting because.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I looked and I looked back on both of them and I'm like, that's, yep, no, that's, that's the way it was, so that doesn't always happen. Oh, yeah, yeah. It's a state only program and, yeah, so, yeah, we don't have any problem with that. And LEAP is the next one and as you can see, we don't have anything that, we won't have until December. I mean, November is our first payment. LEAP officially starts November first, which is today. Uh, we've had the other payments, uh, the other, um, applications for people that were out before and they get mailed and then they bring those down. So I think Rhonda said she's already processed like about sixty, six, by this time probably about seventy already.
So the state sends you the money and you disperse it, or do you disperse it and get it back, or?
Neither, we don't, we, we don't receive the money and it, it goes on a card. Or, and, or the payments are made directly to the vendors.
Got it.
If it's a vendor payment, they go directly. We don't have.
So there's no pass through money?
There's no pass through, there's.
But these would be the dollar amounts if it were.
These would be the dollar amounts that, yeah, somewhere in that neighborhood.
So you're not writing checks to these people?
We're not writing checks to people, no. We are not doing that. We used to have to do that. We don't have to do that anymore. And then our Medicaid transportation and that's just for the people who have Medicaid and will need to have, be transported to doctor's appointments then. So we spend a lot of time on Medicaid transportation and this time we did ten payments to different vendors on that. Some are people, some are like rotary, some are whoever, but there again, that's all money. I mean, there's no, there's no county money.
In and out.
Yeah. And then CSBG, this is, yeah, this is the one I have to request the money for when I do get it. I mean, I have an allocation, but I have to, we do write the checks to the people on this one. And then we send in the reimbursement and they reimburse us for it. So that was that one. And Energy Outreach has just started again. It started October first and I did two payments to that. September of eighteen, oh, no, no. Oh, I need to change that. I missed that.
Hey.
Hey, I did, I missed that. I need to change that date on that, cause it just started, so I can make myself a note, fix that. Okay.
Well, I just got a propane bill yesterday. Do I give that directly to you, or do I give it?
You, you, you fill out an application, then you, then you give it to me.
Okay.
No, it, no, it's, no, actually, ELC applications are, um, used to be one page, which was, um, really kinda bad cause everything was just crammed in there and they've redone it and so now it's two pages, but it makes it easier to read for the people and for me to, gotta answer it. Jay has a question.
Criteria more.
No, he can just wait for it.
Yes, yes, yeah, that's what I'm gonna fix. I wasn't, I wasn't paying any attention to that.
This is an old one.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
She brings us old reports and we just nod and go, okay, good.
Oh, no, actually, this is September, I'm fine. This is September and it didn't start until October first. Hello, so we're good. I didn't have any. There we go. I'm okay. I'm okay.
Good.
I have to fix it next time. Um, what's the criteria on ELC? They just have to be income eligible and there is a guideline for that. But it's higher than LEAP and so, you know, sometimes if somebody's just above the LEAP guideline, we can help them with that. And then there's our food assistance and that shows how many, uh, we have two hundred and seventeen in September.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a bit higher.
Didn't you ever do a, or is there any kind of statistic that show based on population? Is Custer County in line with this percentage recipients? Are we high, low, or is that not even a fair question to ask?
I, yeah, that would be hard to do. I mean, comparing them by camp, by population, they really don't do that.
I just didn't know.
Yeah.
Probably by county.
By county, but, yeah.
Pretty consistent, those two.
I was just curious.
Yeah, it does. I mean, we don't see, you know, sometimes we see, uh, in the winter time, in the summertime, we usually see it go down a little bit because people are able to work more and, uh, like May it was dropped, but now we're climbing back up again, so. And then the dollar amount just depends on the household size that are coming on, so that fluctuates. And then our two fab are commodities that we get. This is the number of households served this time. And then the total amount that we got. I got, uh, I received more product last time because they had a lot of reserve that they were trying to get rid of. And so I ordered a bunch of it and, uh, so we were able to help them out a little bit more that month.
Yeah, like.
Yeah, mm-hmm, yep. Cause they sent all that stuff, so I just ordered it and we gave it out, so. They're gonna give it to us, although they had fresh milk and it's like, we can't take fresh milk because we only get the commodities one day a month and the expiration dates are on it and that's not, that's not gonna work for them. We're not going to have that, so we said we're not doing that. See you later. Um, that's about it. I don't have any other pressing thing going on at the time.
I tried to digest the dashboard, but it just about killed me.
Well, C stats are lovely and then they sent me a thing and said some of them were wrong.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I tried to go through them, but I'm telling you.
Yeah, and we get down in child, in some of this child support stuff, we have no control over that. But we've tried to do the, like, New Colorado Work Applications and getting the redeterminations done, and you see that. So some of this stuff, yeah, then we get down here, actually, it's pretty good. I was at Public County one time, you see the amount of, they had more green, more red. All of this was red and they had a few greens. Yeah, it's ridiculous.
Uh, that's the dashboard.
Yes, the C stat. Yeah, Public County, they just start me nuts, I've been trying to get a case transferred from them. And, um, got one from El Paso County, which is a bigger county, faster than I've got it from them, and the gal sent it. I contacted her, she sent it over to the gal, she still hasn't done it, I'm gonna contact the gal again, get me this case. Because that also shows up sometimes on our C stat stuff, because we can't work the case because it's on in another county, or part of it is, we gotta get it transferred. And sometimes larger counties do not want to cooperate.
Yeah, sixty four pages on that C stat.
Oh, yeah, they just go on forever.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then they send me a thing, they'll send me timeliness reports statewide that shows, statewide, that, so it'll show. This is what happened here, and I'm going, okay, I, statewide, I don't. I, I'd like to see what's going on here, so I know what's going on here, but I'm not responsible for what they do in every other county. So, okay, any questions, anything else?
No.
Okay, okay.
I gotta ask my question I ask everyone, and you know, is there anything we need to know that we can help you with?
No.
Everything under control?
Yeah, everything's under control as much as we can keep it under control.
I totally understand that.
As much as we can, but no, we're good.
Thanks for what you did.
We, um, we have to visit our child, uh, our kids that we have in foster care, you know, we have to visit them monthly. So we have, now we have two who are up in the Denver area, so, uh, Stacy went up yesterday, she saw.
Did you just see county plane, or did you just drive up?
No, she drove up and actually, she went, uh, through, uh, she went down, she went the river, she went fifty. But a plane would've been nice.
Yeah, well, word.
But, but, and, but what she was doing, and, uh, she went up yesterday, saw him, saw one of them. She has a staffing for the other one today, and then she's gonna go back and see the other one today, so. We've got a visit in October and November, so we've got her visits and. And got it covered and, uh, that's working out, cause she had to be back today to do a staffing for the other child that we just moved up there. So we did that, so that'll help with some of the travel, we're hoping, and. Keep her off the road all the time, you know, so.
If you wanna start flying to those, contact Bill, I'm sure.
We'll work out a charter outfit.
Oh, that'd be great, Bill, that would be marvelous.
Falcon nine hundred.
That would be really great.
Lower, lower up to Denver.
About eight hundred dollars an hour.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I know how it rolls there, yeah.
I'll stop that on my way.
Yeah, oh, that, that would be great, I'll just fill you in on them.
You know, resting?
Perfect.
I've texted him and he didn't respond, but.
I'll be mucking out.
Um, he was, I think everyone is thrown off a bit because it's a Thursday, Friday meeting instead of a Tuesday, Wednesday meeting, so.
So the three meal.
Alyssa's.
Could be us hope.
Yeah. Jim, how are you?
Good.
How you doing?
Morning.
See ya.
You're healthy this morning, I hope.
Hey. Well, I'm a progress after I fired my cardiologist, so, about killed me, so, that way I switch. Long story.
Okay, well, let's see, yeah.
Kind, keep it kinda short for you this month.
That won't hurt our feelings, Tim.
No, I know, I'll, I'll make up for it next month, probably. Okay. Alright.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for your.
Okay.
Being pretty consistent with your contacts, aren't you?
Yeah, the numbers are, are back up, it helps when in the office. Entire situation not in the hospital, so, pretty, pretty busy month, um. And so staff, the month report goes to state, and, uh, seven in office visits, um. And, and then on the, on the second page, we always, we do a trust fund with, uh, with the V F W, so. Uh, we had one day of trust fund grant money, and then, uh, we will be doing applications this Monday, Monday coming up with the V F W, so. That should be a busy day this Monday, so, okay, uh, nothing other than that. Not too exciting, uh, I also attached the fourth page showing from the database that we're up to, that is more vets, new vets this month again, so. Up to four seventy seven are on, so. Um, my estimate is still that we probably have at least eleven hundred vets in the county. So it just shows we still have a lot we haven't met yet, but, but it's progress, you know, from where we were to where we're at, so. Okay, so that's it, all I've got for the state report.
Good.
Any questions on that?
It's good, I moved to approve the state report.
Second.
We moved to second and approved state report, discussion, questions? Hearing none, see the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, vote nay.
Okay. Thank you. Um, as I mentioned, the second item is trust fund, V F W is going well, uh, James Phelps, who's the new grant administrator this year, Ivan Brooks did it for the last two years. So, uh, we've done three rounds of grant money. So, they've been approved for fifty five thousand dollars, we've probably spent somewhere around thirteen of that so far, and, uh, so. This money will be the next round, so, um, and the way, and the way it works, we, we, I don't know if I mentioned, but we do the first, second, third money of the month. Um, uh, they come in if there's money in the account, so, some months we do two rounds, some months. We run out, we, we've gone through ten grand, cause they, they approve fifty five, it, it, the state releases the money in installments. So if you ever have someone come to you, I don't understand why, some monies it's there, some monies not, but the state releases the money as it's spent. So we have to spend it down, then the grant minister has to do his reports, and then he has to send in their requests, and the state's controllers, and they have to release them, it's just, it's just a crazy system.
What's the total?
Fifty five thousand for, for a year is what they've been approved for, okay, and so, um.
You'll spend all of that, probably, huh?
Yeah, it, it, we have until June to spend it all, so, uh, there's always this initial rush in the early years, everyone getting their firewood and propane and, and stuff, so. And then, uh, come about February, March, it'll kind of slow up, and so we'll try to make sure we keep things in the paper, even though there's still money. Lot, some years, like last year, they approved for forty thousand, so we ran out like in March, and that's typical, not, that's typical amount, thirty five, forty thousand a year. This year we got fifteen thousand more, so we'll have it longer, so we'll have to make sure we keep things in the paper, especially come about March, April timeframe, cause people assume the money's gone. And they just will stop inquiring about it, so.
Primarily for what?
Well, it's, the, the, the purpose of the grant, it's a, uh, to assist veterans in financial need, and that's the key, they have to show a need, not just a want. And two, for shelter, clothing, food, uh, those type of things, things we can't do is we can't pay medical bills, um, can't pay cell, cellphone bills, stuff like that, but. Electric bills, any utility bills, utilities, firewood, um, sometimes we can do things like, uh. A couple of years ago, I had, in one week, I had three veterans come through and I walked about, I noticed their tires were bald, totally bald, I mean, all four of them. And that happened like three times in a month, and, uh, so we got the approval to, for safety reasons, to replace tires. So, uh, those are the type of things we, we can do, as far as that goes. Also, we do food cards with the, the grocery, local grocery store, um, so. Um, so that's the purpose of the grant, as far as that goes, okay? So, when I first started, there's a lot of confusion about where the money came from, it comes from the state, it's, it's part of the tobacco settlement, uh, some of that revenue that they get every year for that. And one percent of that large pool of money is set aside for this grant program. So it's not a V A program, there's a lot of people coming in, where, where's the V A money, where's the, it's not a benefit program, it, just because you're a veteran doesn't mean you just get it and so forth. So, uh, this, it's constantly education, every time someone comes through, we go over a short, you know, explanation of what the problem is, what, where the money comes from and what the purpose of. Uh, in the past, when I did that, uh, we would kind of explain, this is to assist veterans in need and emphasize the need and so forth. And then we just, you know, took the applications, and then we, uh, an audit was done last year, and across the state, there was. Discovered that there are some people getting money they really didn't need it, including, we had one vet here, and, uh, so the state came back, so you have to. Besides doing that, you have to then say, okay, now tell me why you need the money and so forth. Sometimes it's real simple things, and what I've kind of started doing is, and with the, the V F W, is I'll ask, what is your monthly income? It's not a qualifier, uh, type of thing, if you qualify, but it's an indicator. We have vets here who have two hundred, seven hundred dollars a month, that's their total income. Coming in, well, if they're seven hundred, eight hundred, twelve hundred dollars a month, they're in need, no questions asked. But I have, I had people coming in who said, well, my income a month is about five grand, six grand, so, okay, so now I need you to write out. What, what's going on, is it medical bills, have you had just something, you know, the sky's falling or something? And then, so we have to then be able to justify those things to the state, okay? So that's how that works, okay, um, I'm going up to Denver on the fourteenth of November to the V A regional office, I have an opportunity. To meet with people from the appeals, claim side of the house, including people who are implementing the ramp program, which is the, the test program for the new appeals system that kicks in. In February. Denver is one of the two test sites for this, uh, thing, so, so we're right in the middle of it, so I have an opportunity to meet some folks, um.
What does it do?
The ramp program, well, it's for the appeals for disability claims, for service connect disability claims, or it, it was the president signed the order, the law, in the, earlier this, last year. And it's, was, it's being implemented as a test this year before they kick it off next year. Congress required them to show that what they were planning to do, to run a test to show some data that it actually will work, okay? Before they will actually implement the whole thing next, uh, next October. And Denver was one of the test sites for the area, uh, as far as regional offices go. Um, just a real short overview, when a veteran comes in, I do a claim, claim for service disabilities, we put the claim in, uh, it takes about. Right now, I've had some claims done in sixty days or less, start to finish, um, on the decision. If the decision comes back, denied, or we disagree with something on the decision, and we appeal that, a notice of disagreement goes in, okay? And the only option right now is that it has to be re-looked at by a decision review officer at the regional office. Um, and then once, and that, that can take two to three years, uh, on average, it's taken three years now for that to happen, okay? So, when that decision comes back, uh.
Are they hoping that the veterans die before?
No, it's just, there's a backlog of four hundred and fifty thousand plus appeals in the system, yeah. So when that decision comes back as a statement of the case, it comes back, and if it's still denied, or we still disagree with it. Then you have to do a four nine application to get, to go to the next level to a B V A judge. That can take up to another two to three years, okay? There are certain cases to where, historically, I'll give you a good example, Thailand vets exposed to herbicide exposure, okay? Um, they are not granted the presumption like Vietnam vets, they use that on the perimeter of all the bases in, in Thailand. But you have to show and prove that you had a reason to come in contact, okay? So those cases typically are always disapproved regional level, the judge has more leeway, he's not restricted in handcuffs like the raiders are. So they get approved at a higher rate at the B V A judge. So this new system has a different track system, where they have a three track system. Where when you get that first denial, in that first sixty to ninety days, there's three options, to have a higher level review at a. Regional level, have a supplemental claim at the regional level, so what, if you do a supplemental lane, there's three lanes, supplemental lane means. I still have, I, oh, I got more new evidence, let me go with supplemental claim. Lane, so I can submit new evidence, or if you say, everything's been submitted, I just disagree with the decision, you get a higher review at the regional level. Or the third option is you can go straight to the B V A and get lying, okay? So that can cut out possibly two to four years of wait time for certain cases like the Thailand vets, historically, get approved at the B V A level. So that's what's going on right now, that's why I attached a, a little handout there on the backside, just to kind of, which goes a little out of the way, just tell you just where that goes. So potentially, this is, this could be a huge thing, the, the concern had been early in the year where everyone was kind of waiting to see it, cause it was by invitation only initially. We had a few vets invited, I encouraged them to hold off until we saw, cause most law firms that contacted, who've been doing this for a long time. Were, were advising their vets to wait and see until some data start coming out, because if you go from the old system, that you've been lying for two years. To get into this faster system, and it turns out not to be any faster.
Take them under three years.
You lose your place in the old system and your, so, so the data is now showing that, that people who have been waiting for. A year have gotten now their, their decision done in about six months, and they save themselves probably a year and a half to two years. So starting with hopeful, the concern being though, is that they're, now they're gonna run two systems simultaneously, because the legacy system, which they call the old system. People cannot be forced out of that system, and thus Congress changes the law, which I don't think they'll do, so people who've been in it for two, two and a half years. Or just don't trust the new system, so they're gonna have to run two appeal systems, and they've struggled for years of running one. And they're starting to take people from the old system to work on the new system, some are working both, so anyways, that's what we're doing, that's what we're dealing with right now. So there's a lot of, but, but there's hope, but, but just that tracking of that option to go strictly to B V A at that first initial appeal process could be a huge thing, but. Anyways, if you want more, come over, I'll give you the more, the long version of the explanation, that's the short version. Uh, the other thing, uh, also that we're dealing with still is, uh, the community based program, which was a choice program, uh, that's in flux, so I get a chance to go meet with some folks. Uh, try to get some insight up in Denver on how that's sorting out, cause there's still a lot of confusion, uh, and people are calling and getting two different answers. Sometimes, I mean, it's just chaos right now, so. Um, and the only thing I've got is Thanksgiving week, I'm taking a couple of days, uh, to go see family for Thanksgiving, so.
So you're, you're taking your personal vacation time?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, one day of that would be because, um, we're probably doing, on Veterans Day, which we get to twelfth, I'm probably gonna work that day. So we can do applications that Monday, so I'm gonna take an alternate day as one of those days, and then just take two vacation days.
And who's been signing your, your leave time, Donna been doing that, or one of the commissioners, or?
Well, I've been submitting it to Donna, where that goes, okay, so, um. And I think that's all I've got for today.
Good.
Thanks.
Alright, sir, thank you.
Any questions for me?
I don't, no.
Alright.
Thanks, thanks.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Coming in. I hate you.
Oh, I got it, I got it, sorry.
Are you catching something, sir?
Uh, yeah. Catch a lot of grief. Good morning, how are you?
Yep.
Just a bundle of smile and joy this morning, good?
Always, I've never seen it without a beautiful smile, but don't take that wrong, I meant that just as a nice way to say.
Thank you.
How are things?
Super.
Good, are you lying, or are you telling the truth? Let's see here, I might not have moved your report over, so I better go find it.
That's what I was doing too.
So we're just giving a whole bunch of vaccinations. Isn't that precious?
Worried about this polio thing that's going around?
You know, I'm really not, and here's the reason why, because nobody's dying from it, and I know that sounds like kind of harsh. But seriously, nobody's dying from it, and.
Pretty low population.
And it's a very, very small, very, um, concentrated population, um, and it's, I mean, it's all over the country. But it's, what's in Colorado is literally in one neighborhood, in Aurora. So, um, and they've, public health, you know, Colorado Public Health has done a great job of isolating it and. Treating it, and it's, it's, and shoots, and it's, it's pretty much been eradicated already, so. Well, it's, and it's actually not polio, but it's a polio-like.
Like an autoimmune problem.
It is an autoimmune issue and it, and it causes polio-like symptoms, so.
Some kids can recover, some just get paralyzed, others die.
Yeah, so, and there, in Colorado, there hasn't been any fatalities, so. Um, and the fatalities that have come are in third world countries, where they haven't gotten any treatment at all.
Not in the US.
None in the U S.
So flu vaccine, vaccinations, you can all make an appointment.
You can all make an appointment, some have been just showing up, but for the most part, I was for a while just doing everybody that shows up, but guess what? I wasn't getting this dearly squat up done otherwise, so I had to kind of rein that in a little bit.
Just get started.
I told you to just show up, and there's, I was there for a while, I was seriously just doing everybody that showed up, and I, I got behind on my. I was seriously just doing everybody that showed up, and I, I got behind on my deliverables for my EPR stuff, so I'm like, okay, I gotta rein that in. So, um, and it's starting to taper off a little bit just because we've done, we've done plenty, so. Um, but one last flu shot clinic this weekend coming up, and we did more in the last flu clinic than we ever did in a clinic before, so.
Good job.
Yeah.
And this vaccinating health workers, that's a law, you have to be vaccinated?
It's an OSHA requirement. Um.
Yeah, I find that very interesting.
I'm having a hard time with it myself, to be perfectly honest.
Yeah, I mean, talk about government.
Yeah.
We're gonna start vaccinating you based on your.
Profession.
Career, exactly.
Um, now, like, so the flu vaccine, you can, if you choose not to get a flu vaccine, you can wear a mask through the entire, you know, flu season, which personally, I'm a little claustrophobic, so that's not an option. Um, but as far as like the MMR and T-DAP and, um, what's the other one that they're requiring? Hep B. They're, they're pretty much saying if you don't get it, you can't.
Can't work.
Or if you can't, the varicella also, so.
This is not a good precedent. I mean, my mind is just racing forward to all kinds of things where government goes to females enlisting in the military that you need to, you know where I'm going, I mean.
Well, we had this conversation the other day about, yeah, I.
This is not a good plan, the government getting involved in that.
Yeah, and I mean, you guys know where I stand, like, I'm, I, I think you should be vaccinated, but personally, I don't feel like you should be forced to be vaccinated. I feel like you should have the choice to be vaccinated. And I feel like as soon as the government steps in and says that you have to be vaccinated, whether it's OSHA or VOCC or whoever, it's not, but it's, you know.
Well, government could say if you're gonna be an elected official, you have to be vaccinated. Well, wait a minute.
Right, yeah.
Anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is unfortunately above all of our pay grade at this point, but it's, you know, and the same thing for kids. It's, and this is my argument too, like, if you, yeah, we could.
Okay.
Yeah, we could go that, a long ways with that.
Your first aid classes were those for the public school?
For the public, yep. Mm-hmm, um, and we were able to get another, um, daycare provider in our community because of this class right here, so that was a win, yeah. And I, I did CPR, first aid, and, uh, standard precautions class with one of the gals in that one, so. So, that was a huge.
Good.
So, yeah, just kinda same old, same old, just plugging along.
No, go ahead.
How's the relationship with the clinic? I mean, we're still on.
Yeah, we're still doing pretty good. We're, um, starting to feel a little bit of growing pains with, with some of that, but it's not anything unusual, it's nothing we can't handle, so.
You need help, come talk to us.
I know, thank you. At this point, it's nothing we can't.
Okay, that's why I ask.
As adults.
I don't ask because I'm just curious.
Yeah.
What can we do to help?
Yeah, I'm actually thinking, not, not on the level of, of the clinic and the, and public health, but public health is so busy that in the next budget cycle, I might think about looking at getting a per diem, another per diem person on. Um, because we're, we're busy.
Talk to us as well.
Yeah.
You know, we'll do what we can.
Yeah.
And kids council, do you?
So, Beth is our representative from public health, Beth Green, um, with the kids council. And, you know, I'm not a micromanager kinda director, so she does, she does all of our work with that, and she's amazing. Um, so, right now, our biggest, um, involvement with the kids council is the dental program. And so, we're getting a lot of stuff done with that. We actually saw three more kids at the school through the dental program, um, just last week, so. Um, and that was since I actually typed up this report.
Good.
Um, so, that's huge. And then there's also gonna be some, it's some kind of a psychiatric development thing with kids coming up, and it's, yeah, I'm not entirely sure what that's about, but that's the next big push. And then the kids council's taking over the Cooking Matters, which I think is huge because I think that's a really good program. That's gonna be taking over the way and when, um.
Is that gone now, the way and when thing?
The way and when thing is gone. Um, Cooking Matters is gonna be pretty much taking its place, in my opinion, as far as that realm of healthy eating, weight loss stuff. Um, but the kids council's gonna be pushing it, even though they only do eight and under. It's gonna encompass all age groups.
Okay. Uh, the new rent?
So, they're.
January, or?
Starting in January, and they're putting together a rental agreement for us to look at, so. I'll be bringing that in, in the December.
And we're at seven hundred five three.
Keep going.
Fifty, let's just go fifty, a thousand.
But we have been paying?
Nothing.
Nothing.
I thought we were paying something.
It was a freebie, they finally got us.
They won a thousand bucks, I would guess.
It's really fair, I mean.
It, it really is, especially like every time, yeah, it's.
When you start penciling it out, I'm not complaining, I was trying.
It'd be nice.
Put it in perspective.
Because they got a mill leverage increase not long ago. It'd be nice if they would've said, we're gonna share some of that by giving free services to the county for our public health nurse. And that was the argument that fell on deaf ears when I made it, but I tried.
Okay, we're good, so January.
Starting January, yeah. So, we'll, we'll get that rental agreement, and then, yeah, I'll talk to Donna. We'll get it all figured out as far as when we're gonna make that payment and what looks like.
And bring the agreement to us?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay.
Ready?
Yep.
All right.
Forward and upward.
Stay strong, be happy.
Places in your phone are color coordinated.
Hell, yeah.
It's a girl saying you won't understand.
She's got about twelve, got about twelve phones, and then it's not that she buys the sunglasses, she buys the phones.
Whatever, I have one phone.
Yeah, okay. Uh-huh. All right, kiddo, thank you. See ya. Speaking of phones, I'm on my third one in the last forty-five days.
Really?
Yeah.
Same problem.
Too much.
Mine, my first one kinda suffered the white death. I happened to have an insurance policy on it, so they sent me another one. And it wasn't, yeah, we wondered, sir.
Lucky it's here.
Yeah. So. I sent it back, they sent me another one, well, the, the speaker phone part didn't work properly, and I do a lot of speaker, okay, I can't hear. And I called them, I said, this refurbished phone you sent me, it didn't work. Well, it's still under warranty, send it back, we'll, we'll send you a new one. You send it back, and it won't cost you anything, so.
But they don't send new ones, they send it refurbished?
Those insurance policies are for refurbished.
I know, it's terrible.
Mm-hmm. It probably belonged to a drug dealer before I got it.
Yeah, it probably works pretty bad.
Well, yeah, that's right.
And they need reliable community.
But I go through that moment of panic when I hit delete all, banking on that I can restore everything from the cloud. And it's, oh, it just puts me on pins and needles, but it worked.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
I know.
So.
Um, Rusty's not at the landfill. I texted him, he has not texted me back, so I don't know where he is.
Okay.
Can I suggest that we just move it over to tomorrow?
You wanna just try to call him, or you want me to call?
I just tried calling him.
Oh, you did?
Well, I didn't, I didn't try calling his cell phone, you can. But I'm thinking if he didn't answer my text.
It was pretty straightforward, I thought, I read it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to have a chance to visit with him about the monitoring.
Yeah, the wells.
I went out while they were drilling, and don't you know, when I'm driving over towards the drill rig, they all get out, go to the pickup, start eating lunch. Like, oh my gosh, so Rusty and I sit there, visit a little bit, but.
You leaving this open?
Uh, well, it's all.
It's on the voters. Voters are being a little loud today.
Ruckus, it's called ruckus voters. All right, who we waiting for?
Rusty.
Just Rusty?
Yeah, he got me this yesterday.
Did you get a note from him yet? Did he, um?
Dude, Keith Flower, what's going on? All right, uh, shall we roll your staff report to tomorrow? Uh, your staff report, you were on the agenda today for commissioner's meeting. You wanna move it to tomorrow? Yeah, okay, I like chocolate. Jay, do you have a preference of the treat? Because he's gonna bring something.
Coconut.
Donuts.
Coconut.
Bring an apple fritter in here.
Apple fritter, something chocolate, something coconut, bub, there you go. All right, we'll put you on tomorrow. All right, see ya. Yeah, yeah, that's exactly right. Nothing's free, baby, nothing's free. Okay, all right, see ya. Oh, yeah, I'm aware of that, and so I'll, you get a pass, you get a pass. Okay, buddy, see, we've got your report, we'll look at it real quick. Okay. Yeah, they got me.
Will we, will we come tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
They've got issue, not issues, but they got deals going on down there. So, he's trying to assist with the sheriff's office, planning and zoning office thing. Okay, um, any unfinished business, gentlemen?
No, sir.
Nor do I.
Uh, can I just, if I may?
Certain.
Just, because Bill wasn't here when we discussed it. Um, if we could ask, um, Gary, sorry, Gary Hyde.
Oh, yeah.
To address the West Cliff Town Meeting in December, that's the first Tuesday at five thirty. Um, the town, did you hear about the five thousand dollars? Were you in the room?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, at first I heard of it though, that they were willing to pony up.
They're willing to discuss again, so let's put it back on the agenda. They can't do it for this coming Tuesday, and they're gonna send a notice to Roden Bridge to be put on the agenda, but I just wanted to mention to you to ask Gary.
I already sent him an email.
Never mind.
I'll talk to him anyway.
Well, I gave him a heads up that he was gonna be getting an email from Kathy Rice.
Okay, I just don't want to, I don't wanna not show up for that.
Right.
Because I think they're likely to do something.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Anything else unfinished business, Commissioner Cannon? We'll move on to new business, uh, RETAC grant app, um, was in our board packet. Uh, application, uh, to two thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars, what their grant amount is. It's primarily for training dispatch.
By a thousand.
Yeah.
Total was thirty-six hundred.
Pardon? The total cost was thirty-six hundred, but the grant request is for twenty-five, thirty-five.
Is this, is this, if that grant is awarded, is this one that the county will be the financial agent for? Is that why it's in front of us?
Uh, yeah, runs through the sheriff's department, but, pardon me.
It's a thousand bucks is what they're obligating the sheriff to.
Eleven fifty-two.
Eleven fifty-two.
Uh, I'm assuming he did.
I think it's his.
Kerry Guyavis wrote the grant, and Shannon signed off on it, so.
He knows he's committing to.
Yeah, salary and benefits to train and qualify five dispatchers.
Has it been submitted, or is that just?
No, I think it's gotta go in and waiting for our signature.
Okay, because, yeah, I was gonna say, I think it's probably.
Is that your understanding, Ms. Brenda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion?
We do.
I move that we accept and approve this RETAC grant application.
Okay. We moved and seconded to approve the RETAC grant. Let me see, debate. Uh, without further looking, gentlemen, I've got money that I will part with to whoever. Tell me what RETAC stands for.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, because I've asked it every time I see it.
Not you, not me, because.
Regional emergency.
Emergency, trauma, something center.
And S R, S C R, S C RETAC, so in Colorado, regional emergency.
Well, it's, yeah.
Communication.
Trauma.
Trauma, thank you.
Advisory Committee.
But I, I noticed I did not get the two dollars in this one.
Yeah, no, you didn't.
Pre-yeah, no. Emergency.
My wife served on that for years.
Trauma, you were right, trauma.
Trauma.
All right, for the discussion, Advisory Committee.
Advisory Committee.
Hearing now, if you'd vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nate, motion carries. Uh, did we have, sorry, I just about asked a stupid question. Yeah, so, I would've gotten a stink eye from our admin assistant if I'd asked a question I was getting ready to ask.
So, is Bill Baker coming today, or no?
Well, that's what his wife said yesterday, so.
He probably thinks it's like closer to noon.
Um.
No, he knew what time it was.
I think I told her ten thirty, so, because our, our last staff meeting was about ten thirty. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. So, uh, gentlemen, if you care to, we can take another little recess while we're waiting for our last new business item, which was a request from Mr. Baker to be on the agenda to discuss the Fair Board.
I agree with the recess.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
What is, um, what time was he told to be?
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty.
Okay, yeah.
We can take that.
Thank you.
There he is.
Called the meeting back to order. Um, gentlemen, I was gonna try to, try to send you, uh, some updated drawings from AT&T so you can look at before we go out there. But I'm gonna have to go back through my email list and find those. Let me see real quick if I can. I sent a set of drawings to Sheriff Byerly for him to look at because we were asking him to change the location of that tower just a little bit to match up with our proposed fencing to go around the sheriff's deal, which has been approved. They haven't gotten the money for that yet, but, uh, anyway, I'll try to do that before we go out there today, so you can have a chance to look at that. So, with that being said, uh, Mr. Baker's requested to be on the agenda to visit with us about the Fair Board. With that, sir, you're welcome to come up, have a seat. Thanks for being here, appreciate it.
Well, gentlemen, you know, I'd like to say it's my pleasure to be here, but unfortunately, that is not the exact truth.
Okay.
But, you know, in keeping with the spirit. But, you know, in keeping with the spirit of four H, which is the main reason that we're talking about this, well, we try to be as positive as possible. So, I'm Lynn Squires, and, uh, Brianna Ebert are among the best fair board members you have.
Okay.
Those people do their job, do what they're supposed to do, and try not to get involved in the rest of it. The reason I'm really here is because the fair board works for you guys, has one job put on the fair, can't seem to even get the book right. Four years, we've been having shooting sports in the same place, they were told all of this information by the now gone agent. Worked real well while we had an agent, soon as the agent's gone, they're right back to it again. So, when we get a new agent, maybe they'll wind them in a little bit, but, you know, if you wound them in, they wouldn't have to.
Okay.
What do you mean?
I am confused, sir.
Yeah.
Could you give me some background, please?
Yeah, help me out.
You made your shooting sports, where is shooting sports located at? You said that your shooting sports.
The competition has been held at Cactus Flats for the last four years.
Okay.
At the same time, and the fair board knows all this, and they were told all this, but they can't get it in the book, they can't make it be right.
Okay.
They have superintendents assigned for everything, and that is according to protocol. Except this year, they decided to not have any for archery or firearms, that's not a legal competition. It's not a cow, so it doesn't really matter. And I understand that there are personal problems that they have that they just need to get over.
Okay, so you're saying that they didn't get the information in this year's fair book about shooting sports?
Wasn't correct or omitted.
Okay. Alright, uh, I attended a fair board meeting the other night, I can tell you that they are in the process, obviously, of revamping the fair book for next year. Everything that has to do with state four H will be taken out of that fair book and will be given to all the four H members in the fall when they enroll, so the fair book's gonna look totally different next year. Uh, whether or not the information you're talking about will be in the fair book or not, I can't answer that, but, uh.
But they can, Tom, because you know they're required to put it in there.
All the rules and regulations will be given to the individual four H members, they're not gonna be in the fair book. But the schedule should be in the fair book.
And so should the appropriate information.
Okay.
That is related to the entire fair.
Okay, and I think it will be, go ahead.
Ask question, so, you brought us their attention.
It does no good, Jay.
No, did you bring it to their attention?
I brought it to Tom and you guys' attention, because it does me no good to deal with those people.
So you don't attend meetings?
I'm not sure.
Oh, no, I used to be on fair board, Bill, but they threw me off because they didn't like me, because I didn't support their livestock only attitude.
When did you quit?
No, I didn't quit.
When did you not stop, when did you stop?
Last year.
Okay, so same group?
Same group, it's the rotating door, there's a rotating policy, they take turns being president, vice president, et cetera. It's never gonna change until somebody does something about that. It's not my place to say, but as far as I'm concerned, you should appoint the fair board, the board of commissioners, or better yet, let the community elect them.
That's not gonna happen.
Yeah, we approve the appointments to the fair board, we don't appoint them, we approve the appointments, uh, as, and handle the same way as every other board.
I'm still apologizing, I don't mean this in any way derogatory, but I'm still really not sure I understand what this, what you're telling us, you're telling us that
Jay, they don't, they don't, they don't do their job, it's very simple, they have one job put on the fair, it can only be a four H fair if it's four H sanctioned. That's where they run into problems.
Okay, uh, I guess I would say, number one, I, in my opinion, they are doing their job, because we had fair. So, for you to say they're not doing their job, that's not totally accurate, now, you may have issues with the way they're doing their job, I'm not discounting that. But they did put on the county fair, correct? Whether it's to your liking or my liking, doesn't matter, the point is, did they put on the county fair?
And that has to be answered, yes, Tom.
So then I would.
So does that absolve you from correctly doing your job?
No, not at all.
Because you did a piece of it?
I would.
So what didn't they do, Bill, that they didn't include?
Well, they didn't include the superintendents like they should, they still have other superintendents for other projects, going out there and prepping those animals for those kids. And those people got busted for it this year by the then-agent, who will not stand for that, and unfortunately, I don't hear that that person's coming back. But I sure hope we get another one that won't stand for such nonsense, because when you're doing it for someone, they're not learning by doing.
CSU judge or something, that bust, what do you mean busted, what happened?
Um, man's name was Dean, that was the acting agent during fair, several things happened around livestock that he stopped, that go on regularly.
So it kept it in line with what the, so.
Hasn't been done in the past.
Okay, well, that got done, so we will hope that they get the superintendents to do it for everything that's sanctioned by.
When the superintendent is out there doing what they're not supposed to be doing, that is part of the problem, not the solution.
Are you fearing that the, that, you know, we're gonna have an extension agent soon? And, uh, when we, when we interviewed them, they, every one of them talked about all fours, not, not animals, that was, you know, four H is four H.
It's.
Including a superintendent for quilting, you know.
Quilting is as good a project as steel, it just doesn't pay.
And we all recognize that, we want four H fair to be four H, I, I don't think we have an issue with that. And, so, but you're, you're trying to help the fair board now head off a problem that could happen if they're not, if they don't do it all inclusive, that.
That has always been their problem, they don't wanna do that.
And right now, what you seeing happen that would lead you to believe it won't, isn't gonna be better?
Their meetings are at such an inappropriate time, that it takes over a month to get any information out of them, if you're gonna have fair in June, you better darn well know what they did in May, regardless.
So they haven't met yet?
The way it's set up, nobody knows anything, there is no information assimilated, the last set of minutes that came in didn't come in until September something. Now, these people are famous for all having something better to do at, uh, National Western Stock Show, so they don't have to have a fair board meeting then.
In January?
No, in July and August.
Uh, well, let me respond a little bit, I, I just, I don't particularly care or appreciate you throwing blanket statements over things, I, I'll sit here all day and listen to specific concerns that are accurate and relevant, okay? So, number one, they don't have a meeting in August, that is none of your business, that's none of my business, that's what the fair board had decided, that they're not gonna have a meeting in August. If you don't like that, then go to the fair board meetings and tell them you'd appreciate them having a meeting in August.
Tom, the last time I sat down with the fair board and you, you and someone there had the nerve to have the police there, because they were worried about me, it's like, you people have no clue.
Okay, there's a big old blanket statement, I had nothing to do with that, sir.
It's not what I was told.
Uh, well, ask me. Just ask me if I asked for the police to be there.
Tom, you can lie sitting there as well, you can lie when you're on the phone.
I, I'm not, I'm not appreciating this at all.
Yeah, I'm not gonna do these blanket statements, because they're not productive, they're just generalized blanket statements.
I'm only trying to be productive and get something done.
Okay.
And nothing has happened, so here I am again.
Okay, I believe things have happened.
Both of, all of us have been asking the same thing here, we need the specifics, Bill. It, what makes you think that they haven't listened and that they've started off this next year, I, I don't, I haven't heard any of this, the specifics. And I don't think you've heard any specifics, um, you know, you're telling us that it's the same group and they're always gonna do the same thing, so let's just get rid of them and we'll start over, that's sort of what you just told us.
That's what I told you last year.
And I don't believe that's going to happen, cause I believe the fair board is functioning, we had a county fair, very successful.
Alright, so if that's all it takes to be successful, then I'm wasting your time.
Okay.
Because you're satisfied with what they're doing.
Wouldn't argue with that.
Okay, then, you're satisfied with less than proper performance, that's okay with me, I can't do anything about that.
No, see, you're, you're not defining for us what that proper performance is, it was a successful fair, but, what are the, what do we need to have things done, I mean, I, I, I know Jay, Tom, I, they got something good, I would, uh, be more than happy to tell, help them out, say, look, this is not being done, why? I, I, I haven't heard anything you can tell me that I can go to them and beat them up over, or Tom can beat them up over. Other than that they're gonna do the same thing they've always done, cause they're the same people.
Because they just don't follow the rules, Bill. And, and by, the commissioner's not appointing them.
See, lay the rule out and say, here, here's what happened, here's what happened.
This is the rule, this is what they didn't do, that's what you're not doing, you're giving us blanket statements, you need to be specific so we understand.
Cause the first thing we do, if we went to them and said, you guys have got, you're screwing up, cause he said you're screwing up, and they're gonna ask us, what did he say, what, in what way? And I need something to tell them, here's what way.
They need to change their meetings so that the community can have access to the information that they're supposed to provide.
So what does change it mean, does it mean turn it or put it on at four in the afternoon on the tenth of November, what, what's it mean?
It means so that before fair comes, somebody can know what they've had to say and that everything is alright, as it is now, no one knows that.
So there's no meetings happening at all until all of a sudden the fair's there and people are wondering?
The fair board does their thing, but they don't pass on the information.
Let me respond to that, number one, so these gentlemen know, fair board holds eleven monthly meetings a year. They're held on the third Thursday, they're held at five thirty at night, if they were held at eleven in the morning, I could understand you're saying that they're not scheduling their meetings so people could attend them, but they are night meetings, that's by design. As every other board in the county government system, they keep their minutes, they get their minutes approved at the next meeting, and they're posted on the website, that did not happen in July, they did not get their minutes posted in July. So there was a lag there, they admitted that, they said that was a problem, dropped the ball, their secretary did not email Brenda the minutes, so those minutes did not get posted on the website. Understand that, I visited with them about that. Other than that, you're not gonna get any information from the, any board, other than their minutes being posted thirty days in a row unless you attend the meetings. Now, that's my take on it, we don't, the tourism board, uh, affordable housing, you don't know what they're doing until they post their minutes typically thirty days later. It's not specific to the fair board, all of the organizations do that, would you agree, Ms. Brenda, you're the one that deal with them? Uh, do we have other organizations forget to send you minutes? Absolutely, and do we call them, say, hey, we didn't get your minutes from so and so? That happens, so they failed to get those minutes posted from their July meeting, they didn't have a meeting in August, so that rolled it to September.
I don't have a problem, Tom, about that, what I'm trying to get is the information that's available out into the public before fair, and that's not happening.
Okay, uh, they also admitted this year for a couple of reasons which you're certainly knowledgeable of, that fair book came out later than they would've liked. No problem, they own up to that, nothing they could do about it, they got it when they got it. Had things been different, they'd had it out in, in April.
He's got, he's making a good point, you got a fair book, is there something else that you think would be better, do you wanna put it in the newspaper every other day or something, I mean?
No, I don't have a problem.
Get it pamphled out to the kids in high in school, or what?
I don't know the solution for that, Bill.
Okay, well, they are gonna try a solution, and I alluded to it, they're gonna take a bunch of that stuff out of the fair book, so the fair book is not so critical to all the participants, they're gonna have that stuff four months earlier, cause they're gonna get that when they, when they sign up for their projects, they're not, the fair book is gonna spell out the general rules and regulations, it's not gonna have anything in it about the specific project rules, those will be given to the kids four months earlier, cause they realize that's a problem. So they're working on trying to address that.
Then have them work on trying to address the assimilation of information that they're supposed to do, so that when fair comes, everybody already knows what's going on, they don't have to wait a month.
That's what we're hearing here.
To figure that out.
I, I hope that's what will be the outcome of them giving these, uh, this information to these exhibitors way earlier. Because the average person going to the fair doesn't need to know what the size of a display board for any given project is, but that information historically has been in the fair book. They're taking it out now, they're gonna give that to a document to every family when they register for a particular project.
So they can meet the requirements.
Yeah, yeah, and actually, those are coming from the state.
Requirements, state requirements are the problem that I'm talking about.
And that's the requirements that they're gonna give them as the state four H, if they're in four H, if not, it'd be FFA, give them those state requirements when they sign up for the projects. They're not gonna ask them to download it from a PDF file, they're gonna give it to them upfront, and I think that's probably gonna help, will it be the end all answer, I don't know, that will have to wait and see. I know you're frustrated with them, Bill, I think a couple of things that you're frustrated with them about, they're actually trying to address, I don't think your concerns have fallen on deaf ears.
Everyone has their opinion.
Yeah, I think they're working on it, so, um, I know that you've been concerned about the emphasis put on the livestock portion of that fair, they are in the process of purchasing a new indoor project building, cause they agree, they feel like they've got to get some more emphasis put on non-livestock stuff. And part of the reason that is the concerns you raised, so you're not totally being ignored.
Knows the exact issues we raised with the new applicants for an extension officer, that, that has to happen, that's what their job is, to make it broad, get everybody that can possibly participate to participate.
But the, whoever is an agent for whatever county is never gonna get anywhere with any fair board. When they walk in and say, these are the rules that CSU says, and when they say that, they don't get any backing from anybody else.
Backing from what, you mean the fair board?
Well, this is, no, the fair board is responsible to you guys, and they're responsible to the agent.
Sure.
Okay, well, there was, perhaps that will change, or they do, Bill.
Well, that, and that's not exactly true, Bill, there's the fair board doesn't have anything to do with the extension office.
No, except they're supposed to follow CSU's mandate for running the fair, which is their only thing to do.
See, that, and that's not correct, CSU doesn't mandate anything to the fair board, the fair board can run the fair however they want, however, if you're gonna have four H, then that comes from upstairs, that does not come from the fair board, that's extension's role to make sure that all the rules are met by four H. Doesn't have anything to do with the fair board, now, if the fair board said, we're not gonna provide you the opportunity to have these classes, then we'd have a problem. But the fair board's job is not to make sure the rules of four H are followed, that is upstairs, that comes from extension, so they're two separate entities, they work together, but extension not gonna answer to the fair board, the fair board's not gonna answer to extension. Does that make sense? The fair board answers to us, extension answers to CSU.
Can I ask a question, tell me what it is you want, in, in words I fully understand rather than a blanket statement, why are you sitting here to complain about the fair board? What is it that needs to be done specifically, give me a list or an item, rather than say they need to follow rules, that's not good enough, what rules are they violating?
Jay, what organization has a rotating presidency?
Could you ask my question, please?
They seem to have a set of their own rules that don't really apply to other types of organizations that are similar.
And every organization has their own rules, that is, every organization known to mankind. It does, I, I, I don't, I don't get this conversation.
Then, then follow them, because that's the essence, is that they do not follow the procedure and the rules.
You know, I say one other thing, just cause I'm sitting here fuming over it, I did not appreciate you calling the chairman a liar, I know him so well, there's never been a word out of his mouth that was, that was untruthful, a mistake we all make, that man is not a liar, and I'm gonna stick up for him because I know him, and I resent that.
And I didn't specifically say that, gentlemen, I said that one could do that as well in person.
Then if that's the case, you are a liar, those were your words exactly, I'm very smart, I remember everything.
Okay, let's move on.
Well, the, the issue is, there are, what, you just heard him say. Well, the, the issue is, there are, what, you just heard him say, there are bylaws that every organization has, and they follow those. Are you saying they have bylaws that say X, Y, and Z, and they're not doing them?
Bill, I think that you gentlemen must be happy with the way things are.
We are. We like improvement, though, Bill. And if you've got good ideas to make it better, that's, and, and you're saying that, that the superintendents aren't there, and the kids don't qualify, and they can't go to the state level to participate at a higher level because they screwed up here, that matters to us, if that's the case.
It was the case.
Because, because the, uh, Fair Board could say, I don't care about the state fair, and I don't care if our kids ever compete there. But I don't believe that's what they said. And they, they want their kids to move on. They want to be part of the 4H program. So give us, tell us, the, you know, how do we get the superintendents to be there if that's the issue? Or if, if they're, if the kids aren't qualifying because they didn't get the right ground rules? Tell us where that fails.
How do you get, why can the Fair Board not just do what they're supposed to do?
Well, I think they are.
They are.
Okay. Then we're at an impasse. I'm not gonna waste you guys' time because you think that there's not an issue.
Didn't say that.
I say that they always can improve, Bill.
Didn't say there weren't issues. I think they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. Are there gonna be issues? Of course. Are they trying to resolve some issues? I believe they are. I'm not nearly as unhappy with the Fair Board as you are. I grant you that day one.
I'm not the only one that's unhappy. I'm just the most vocal one.
It's all right. No problem with that. Uh, Fair Board has a set of bylaws, Commissioner Canada alluded to, this rotating door phrase of yours, I don't understand it, it doesn't make sense, and if I, if I thought I understood it, I'd tell you it's not correct. They've had a president on that Fair Board for the last three years. That is not a revolving door. Revolving door would be every year they get new leadership. That's not the case. They could, according to their bylaws.
Maybe you should have them change their bylaw.
Uh, it's not up for me.
If they're, if they're failing because of some constitutional thing they've got in their bylaws, then that would be an issue, but I...
They're not.
They're not.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
You bet. Thanks for coming in.
I think I will not trouble you with this any longer.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. I'm glad you're concerned. I mean, that matters.
My concern does no good.
All right, gentlemen, anything else under new business?
We sure feeding the birds well?
Yes. If not, um, we need to have an executive session. I've requested it for yesterday. It got postponed until today.
And did she get back from delivering her kid?
Yeah, it's not, not happening today, so she said she'd be good. Um, but you, if you don't...
What's not happening?
I thought it was today.
It is today. Yes.
Oh, you mean her delivery, her conflict is not happening.
Can I just make a comment on what we just heard?
You may.
Please. And, and I know we're on the record, and I'm fine with it. I think it's very important for us to listen to frustrated citizens who have an issue. And many times, that's the only way we're gonna find out there's a problem. I just wish this gentleman, or anybody who addresses us, could articulate what the complaint is, so that we can understand. Bill, you said exactly right. You're not giving the particular, you're just saying, in general, this is the, that's not good. That's not gonna fly. And I asked him multiple times. So I just wanna comment that I think it's important to have people come to us and say, I've got an issue. I think that's really important. This one, I had a little problem. I didn't particularly appreciate you being called a liar.
Well, he's, he was on them.
And, um, you know, I, I've been to the Fair Board with the previous administration also, and I know the dynamics between uh, Mr. Baker and the prior administration and the current administration. And he may have very sound concerns, but we can't address something unless we understand what it is. And that's what I'm concerned about. And we tried very hard to get that out, and I did not hear it. And I know he left very frustrated.
Yeah, that, his relationship with the Fair Board has eroded to the point that he will not go to a Fair Board meeting to get any information. And so if he doesn't get it from the minutes, then he feels like he's just not getting the information he should. He's very frustrated.
I understand that.
Some of it may be founded. My personal opinion is, most of it's unfounded. But at the same time, it's hard to make that determination when you can't specifically say, uh, this is the problem.
And here's a solution. Here's my view of how you can fix it.
Even if he doesn't bring the solutions.
You don't even say that.
If he just says, here's the problem.
Doesn't even say the problem, well enough to, to deal with.
That made me frustrated.
What's he want us to do? Fire everybody and start over with somebody else? So what good is that?
Change the entire board.
And what makes it, what makes that new board any different, because they're gonna follow the same bylaws?
And I didn't mean to rehash this, but I just wanted to make the comment. I think it's very important to hear people who are upset and frustrated. I just don't know what to do about it if they don't give us, tell us what the problem is. Okay, I'm good. I'm done.
Yeah, you have to...
Yeah, we'll, are you good for your recording? We're gonna go in, take a recess.
Well, as soon as you...
You're gonna stop and start.
Make a motion to go into executive session?
Yeah, we will, uh, the chair would entertain a motion to that effect.
I move we go into executive session to deal with the issue.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Been moving seconded, uh, to move into executive session to deal with personnel matters. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. And with that motion, then would also come the recess of the existing commissioner meeting that we're in. So we will stand in recess. We'll move into executive session. Would you invite Mrs. Hobby? Do I need to do that?
Okay, we're good. Wait a minute, let me get my live stream stuff going too.
Good. Thank you. So the motion to adjourn the executive session, uh, was made and passed, and we're now back into open session, open meeting of the Board of County Commissioners meeting, November 1st. Time is 11:36 AM. Anything else, gentlemen, come before the meeting at this time?
I got a, uh, quick one, but go ahead first, cause I'm...
I was just gonna ask, Ms. Brenda, I, for the agenda for tomorrow, did you mail to us, um, I didn't see a lot of stuff?
When I first sent the board packet, there was nothing. Um, and, but they've been trickling in.
Okay, I'll have to look, cause I didn't update anything.
And they were all individual emails.
Hello, Mr. John.
What's up, Bob?
Just delivering this. Uh, anything else, Mr. Canada?
Yeah, I wanna talk, just real quick.
Okay.
We're talking with Clint earlier, and I mentioned that, uh, with Odd Six, we're talking about moving the berm. And we can move it. We had Ed Lyons take a look at it. We've got the engineers had the, did the staking on it. We know how many cubic yards. No, I haven't, I just got that. I'm passing on to you, talking about it. CNN. And, uh, it turns out that, um, Gary can't get a scraper because they're just not available. And, uh, and if he could, if the price is around 28,000 bucks, which we told Odd Six is 26,000 to 28 for the month, Gary probably couldn't get it done in that month, but it would be dicey. So, uh, I found out, as I mentioned before, that the only contractor up here that has a scraper, and he's got three of them, is Ed. And surprised me. And he's got, he and his son moving it. So that, I had to talk with Clint and said, look, if he can do it, and if he can do it in two weeks, and do it at, for the same price, or cheaper, faster, uh, are we in an issue where we need to compete that or not? If, if there's no competition in the county, and I don't know that even if somebody outside that has a scraper wants to haul one up here, um, to do it, is that, uh, something that we can do? And Clint at first said, yeah, it sounds likely, as long as it's that case, it probably is true. I wanted to run that by you guys to see what you thought.
My understanding is, and I'll defer both to Ms. Hobby and to counsel, is that if there are no alternatives, you do not have to put it out for bid.
Right. That's what I, what I felt.
That's in our policy book. I remember reading that. Cause I quote, this question's come up previously, and we...
Cause I don't think, uh, you know, it would be an issue. Uh, and we're gonna open up forbid the actual, uh, runway improvements and the taxi, you know, all that'll be up for everyone. That's a different one. And it's still being run through. Our agent for that is Armstrong Engineering, and they're handling the mechanics of doing that. So, uh, so we have the opportunity right now to get it done, and Odd Six can land their airplane. And of course, they're paying for it. And so what that involves is the 28,000 bucks that, that we would have had to pay, and they've already signed up to do that. And we've signed up to for, uh, furnish in the labor, meaning Gary's time and whatever time it took to move it, and the fuel to, to execute it. And so according to Ed, you know, I had him go out, and he did meet with the engineers, and he understands the actual cubic yards, and he ran it through his, his process. And he thinks he can do it in two weeks for the same price that we would have done it. So I don't see that that's an issue necessarily.
It's actually a benefit, because we're not gonna use our personnel and our...
That's right. It actually frees us up to do things that isn't a conflict. That's a better deal, actually, for us. So I just wanted to see how you felt, cause I'm comfortable with it, uh, personally.
I'm comfortable without putting out for bid, provided that, as you say, if they're really the only choice, I, I think we wouldn't be violating any, uh, rules that the county has. Do you agree with him, Ms. Hobby?
That's true, and it's, and it's local preference as well.
Yeah, it's a local guy.
So it's, well, it's a win on two.
Okay, I have no issue with this.
Well, I've got a couple of issues. One, I disagree. Uh, I think whether we believe anybody can be competitive or not has nothing to do with whether or not we should put it out for bid.
Well, that's true, but...
Uh, for $28,000, I mean, we got our butts toasted for, for the perception of Byerly having an air conditioning unit put on that sheriff building for $6,000. The perception was, he didn't put that out for bid. And in fact, he did. Uh, and so I showed the documentation to the complaining party about that. But I think we need to give a serious look at $28,000. I think it needs to go out to bids. I don't anticipate one bit of difference in the outcome.
I don't either. Um, differences.
But here, let me have my second issue then. And my second issue is this, that I don't think as an, as a Board of County Commissioners, we ever voted to authorize the county to use the county equipment and/or labor or fuel.
That's a good point there.
I think we did.
I don't think we did. I don't believe we've, well, I know we haven't voted to let whoever do it yet, because obviously we haven't let the bid out.
That's right.
So, um, but...
We, uh, actually, we went through...
There was a lot of discussion about it.
We had, uh, we had the, uh, I believe we did, because we wouldn't have committed Gary to doing it if we hadn't. But, but irrespective, Odd Six is paying for it. And, and in fact, if they wanted to, they could gift it to us, and say, I'm gonna send, which they wanted to do in the first place. They were gonna send up their stuff, and then they couldn't. Cause they just couldn't let it go. So they offered to, we'll pay for it if we had the guys operate the equipment.
Right.
So we would have no say over, uh, who gets to, uh, participate in, in doing that excavation at all. I could just go do it. And we'd say, oh, thanks. So that's how I'm looking at it. Uh, and, and, you know, and, and in fact, if we're gonna go one up, we're gonna do better than that, because if we can save money for Odd Six, that's our goal. You know, they, they're appreciating it.
That's our goal. I couldn't kill this.
Well, no.
I care about the county.
Right, I do too. Uh, as long as we can do it and make everybody happy, I'm happy too. You're, you're right. So anyway, I, I'm good either way. And if we had to do it, that would mean probably, I don't know what the process would be to put it out for bid, to put it in the paper for a week. And see what we get.
See, we even need an RFP. I mean, it'll be something big. I mean, it would be a, a, not a huge undertaking, but kind of. Does Armstrong have kind of an RFP?
Well, they, they'll, they'll put it out for us if we want them to. That's not a hard thing.
So that takes, I mean, so then we're talking instant turnaround to the newspaper. So, but you know, an RFP a lot of the time is, is a hard thing to come up with.
Tom's point is well taken. I mean, it's the correct safe...
That's why, that's why I brought it up.
No, it's the correct safe way to go. You know, I was hung up on, there is no alternative, but we really don't know that until someone, no one else steps forward.
Somebody can try.
Oh, yeah, there's alternatives in my book, whether somebody will take advantage of it with, who knows for that.
Or where they can do it for that.
But I don't think that's our right to, to put that on somebody else. I mean, Cypher may decide he wants to go buy a scraper and do this job.
And then do it for...
But if we don't give him the opportunity, then I think we're shortchanging the process. That's, and I, personally, I don't particularly care how long it takes. I think we could put an ad in the paper or an article in the paper and request bids uh, to move X number of cubic yards of dirt, and we need those bids by four o'clock on a certain date and be done with it.
This is not type critical, is it?
Yeah, it is.
Starting to get that way because of the weather.
Freezing ground, and Odd Six wants to, uh, land their airplane up here. So that's the, that's what's stopping.
Two weeks later, or three weeks later, maybe a month later, waiting on bids and...
If it's a month, it's gone, because the ground's gonna be frozen, and you can't efficiently operate us.
How, how many? Just best your regulation, how many cubic yards?
Let me pull it up.
I mean, personally, I think we could put something in the paper and, and ask for...
And get a turnaround, you know, okay. Get a bid in, uh, well, you know, you could, they could do a bid in a day.
Well, sure. Yeah, I mean, all they're gonna do is calculate.
We just gotta get it out there where they'll do it. Just a second.
Today's Thursday.
Yeah, if Armstrong has, has the numbers, they could send it to Brenda to put in the Sentinel on this coming Friday.
Okay, here it is.
Tell them it's Thursday, the time's...
Tomorrow's Friday.
It's too late for this week's bid.
But next, but we've got the numbers.
Yeah, and so, you know, that's, I mean, that's the hardest part is...
So it said, the runway grading should have 25,000 cubic yards of excavation and 1,300 cubic yards of infillment.
So 38,000 yards of moving?
No, uh, 26, 27,000.
I think that, I think what you said about having Armstrong send it to me, I mean, cause I don't wanna have...
She can post it.
She'd post it on behalf of the airport.
Yeah, I think that's the right thing to do.
And we can put it on the website.
And then...
Do that, give them, uh, four or five days to respond, and we, we got, we know, uh, we, I, we know what Ed can do it for. He's gonna do it for, for exactly what we were gonna do it for.
So it's a dollar or three cents a yard.
And, um, and he was gonna do it, uh, for the, the fuel, the, whatever we thought that, you know, our labor cost, and it's not very much, you know, whatever we're paying Gary to do it. The trouble is time. We want to have one scraper and, and going in circles. Ed will have two, and you can get it done quicker, so it's more efficient.
So you're saying it's 28,000 plus the fuel or not?
Yeah. Yeah. We have to pay for the fuel. If we were operating it, we'd be putting the fuel.
Well, I agree, but...
Wait a minute.
That's 9,000.
I thought we were saving manpower and fuel, so him...
We do save, we do save it because they can do it faster. In other words, Ed, Ed will be more efficient doing it.
But if I understand you right, he's saying 28,000 plus his cost of fuel and labor?
Yeah. Same thing.
We need to go to bid then, that's...
That's the same, uh, it's the same thing that we, that's our cost.
But I guarantee you, we could do it more efficiently than anybody else.
It would be...
Go ahead, Don.
And that we make sure that we put in, it needs to be completed. The bids need to be here by, by noon for you guys to open, and the job must be completed or a penalty will, you know, something so that...
See, that would be whatever, whoever, bid it for.
Agreed.
Cause they would have to calculate what it takes them to make the round trips and figure out the fuel load, just like Ed did, or just like we would, like we did.
I thought it was a turnkey of 26,000.
Yeah, I thought 28,000, he would do it.
That was, uh, the rental on the equipment. And then, remember, the deal was, we would operate it.
I'm confused. If we hire Ed to do it, and he does it for the, for 26,000?
Plus his...
Plus labor and fuel.
And fuel.
Figured the time, two weeks worth of a guy sitting down.
Think of doing it ourselves.
The same thing. That's what we, that's what we did. That's what, uh, we agreed to, to do with, uh, Odd Six.
Well, what would he, what would he, what would Ed line lease the grade or to our hood and bridge folks?
Well, we could, but we don't have, we've got one guy that can operate him. That happens to be a road boss.
Unless we could get Rusty. Man, he's good on that street, the landfill.
So anyway, I don't have a problem doing that. I think we should put the RFP out.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking 35, 40,000 dollars.
Yeah, when it was originally, but I thought it was a turnkey. He could do it for less money and do it sooner, but now I understand differently.
He can, but the total price, you gotta figure the total effort. It was our, our labor, our fuel, and, and the lease. And, and Odd Six was paying for the, the lease.
And that, yeah, and now it's just... And that, yeah, and now it's just.
We have the fuel, we already have that in the budget to handle that, so we can give them the same deal.
So let's say that it's forty grand. Who pays that?
Odd Six pays, uh.
Scraper rental.
Scraper, but twenty-eight thousand.
Okay.
We pay nine thousand bucks for fuel.
And labor.
And the labor is two weeks, one guy's, that's a few thousand bucks.
Well, let's see, two guys, right? Two scrapers, so if you're talking minimum sixteen hours a day.
Forty-some thousand, I think is what the total is.
Right. So sixteen hours a day times ten days?
Yeah.
So a hundred and sixty?
So our cost is going to be around fifteen thousand, fourteen, fifteen thousand.
Roughly about that.
Times operator, probably what, thirty dollars?
Why would not Odd Six be paying the whole forty?
Because they, they asked us to, to do the, to help them.
We're only doing it for them. I mean, why wouldn't they pay the whole thing?
Well, it's more than, because the improvement is more than just them. It, it benefits the other airplanes that we're allowing that come in as well.
But we haven't needed to burn out of there and have, when the airport's been open, we're doing it for them and they should pay for it.
When we agreed, that's right. And when we agreed to do it in the first place, we actually used some economic development money. Cause we knew it was gonna, you know, to do the engineering on it. When we discussed the testing on the runway, because it benefited us.
I objected to that too, cause, but there was, that's another, I think, if I was to feel it was an economic development issue, but that's not the point. That's done, it's decided and it's over.
Yeah, and I believe.
I'm sitting here, hang on one second, let me just make my point. My point is at least today. And up until today, it hasn't been an issue, but today it's an issue because Odd Six wants to bring their larger airplane in. Look, they've been great, they've been wonderful. However, we're doing it for their benefit. They should pay for it.
I believe they, they will pay more than that, to tell you the truth. I haven't talked to them about it because we originally cut the deal. We were going to get a scraper and we were going to go do the labor for them. That was what we.
Yeah, and, and we never voted on that either.
I'm not, yeah, I absolutely agree with that.
Plan, so I want to just be careful about that. We need to go back within minutes. We need to, but.
But that's okay. We can, it's all right. We can go out on a, on a bid and make it happen.
It, that's not the point. We go out on a bid, I think we all agree, we're going to go out on a bid, cause, cause Commissioner Flower was absolutely right.
I agree.
We need to do that, cause we don't know. We're guessing that, that Ed Line's other way. He's right. I concur with that completely. I take that, but let's move forward, okay? But here's the issue I'm really having now. Why is the county paying fifteen thousand dollars to make an improvement for Odd Six when it's for their benefit? This is my issue.
And I think philosophically, we talked about, we may not have all agreed, but I think we talked about that the county's going to receive some benefit from whatever these projects down there are.
You know what?
If, if we only allowed Odd Six to come in, then I'm on board with you a hundred percent.
Right, that's not.
But we're going to allow other people to come in and land and get jet A fuel and use that facility.
How often has this occurred?
Well, it hasn't because we don't have.
Actually, that's right. And we actually do have a new jet, a new person with a jet, uh, a, uh, King Air turb- turboprop. That put his airplane in a hangar out here and is excited about being able to use the runway and the fuel. It just, it reminds me, by the way, I think I, I misstated, I think Odd Six agreed to pay, uh, what it was going to cost, but rental and the fuel. I think the labor is what we, what we had on the deal. But anyway, I can clarify.
If we, yeah, please do, cause I'm very confused. It seems like I've been saying that a lot this morning and maybe.
Don't be confused.
Maybe it's me, I don't know, but what, I'm trying to wrap my head around what our obligation is and what benefit we're getting from.
I think the only obligation we signed up to is to the time and Gary's time to operate that machine.
And that is the one, and that is the one thing I would say, I can buy off on that.
That's right, that's, that's where we are.
This is a sunk cost for us. We're going to pay Gary whether he's out there doing that or he's.
And we'll save time if somebody else.
Hold on a second, please, let me finish. We're going to pay Gary to work whether he's out there running this machine to, to get rid of the berm. Or he's driving around supervising it. He's, it's a sunk cost regardless.
Right.
Okay, the additional cost, I don't think we should incur for any of this, in my opinion.
I agree.
Okay, well, and it may come back and Odd Six may say, no, we talked about fuel and labor. We'll discuss that.
And then let's sit down and we can make a, a rational decision.
I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I'm, I know.
I'm not concerned about Gary because that is a sunk cost regardless. He's not going to do it on overtime when we pay him extra.
So we'll see how, how excited they are to get it done time, more as timely as we're doing. And, uh, I think it's the right way, way to go. I think I get Armstrong to get an RFP together and.
Great. And I think, uh, Donna's right. We need to obviously have a start date, ending day. We want the work performed by this period of time. My question is, and that we haven't talked about this, is where are these twenty-seven thousand cubic yards of dirt going to go?
That, that they got, that was part of the staking.
And where is that?
On the end of the berm where the, the dip goes off after the berm.
Up to Rusty.
And they're taking five hundred, the rest of it was, there's three hundred cubic yards they want to have pulled up onto the south end of the taxiway. The current taxi, or the ramp. Cause they want to be able to pull that back in next year when they get ready to actually excavate it, fill it in.
But the other yardage is going.
It's just going to, it's, and Ed looked at it, it's really a quick third of a mile turn with all, with his equipment. Right at the end of the, the south end of the berm that exists now.
Of the runway or the south end of the berm?
South end of the berm, remember.
Big drainage there.
Right, it, it pays off into a big hole.
Right.
It looked like a perfect spot and they just make a loop and they have a, a skid trail that they're going to make.
So they're not going to move it just to the east, they're going to move it to the south?
South, and then they're going to do the loop back to the east and just make the loop.
I get that, but the deposition, the material is going to be at the south, not to the east.
That's correct. South and to the east side of the runway. Right, but where the berm ends. That berm is a half a mile long, roughly. So, uh, that's easy to, to spec out and it's easy to get in, onto the notice and, uh, just see where it goes.
Well, I, I personally, I think that's the prudent.
I, that's why I brought it up.
Ways for us to go about this.
To get an, an opinion, but I can, you know, if, if there was something else in the, the rules when Clint and I were talking about it. Because of whatever thing.
Well, I mean, just for my legal input, the purchasing policy would, I think, allow you to go ahead. Um, because it says that you can make a purchase without a bid. If there is only one known source of the purchase for a product or service, here we're talking about a service. Um, you can choose to do that if we were absolutely satisfied. Ed Line was the only one that had the ability to bring in his own scraper and do this. Uh, but there's also some language under exceptions. Exceptions to the person, or purchasing policy will be determined on a case by case basis. By the Board of County Commissioners, it'd be felt of us. Uh, and if there's an emergency situation, it's, I don't think it's an emergency, but it would be desirable to get the work done. Um, and then of course, there's the language about local advantage in the purchasing policy to.
By the way, there was one other cost that, uh, that made it more attractive for Ed to do it. And that was in order to get it here for the twenty-eight thousand, you got to spend six to get it up here. And so that's, uh, an additional window that, that makes it harder.
Don't be that at all.
You see, so, uh, that makes it harder for somebody else to come from out of town. I mean, it just limits it.
Right.
Anyway, I don't have a problem doing that and, and we do have enough time if they can get with it within the next week, start.
You know, if, in regard to what Donna said about the local advantage, which is what we're talking about, not having to haul stuff up here. And in respect of what Attorney Smith just said about if, if there is a known source. Is that correct? What was the wording?
Only one known source.
Only one known source, well.
That is the case.
So the, well, is it the case? See, that's the thing. I know for a fact, there are other people who own scrapers. Whether they want to come up here or not, I don't know that.
What, what that meant locally though, Tom.
Well, no, it doesn't say locally or it would have said locally. The local advantage is separate from a known.
There's three different places.
Well, I know, well, I know you can get a, you could go rent a scraper.
Right, exactly.
If you wanted to, but can you get it timely? That, see, we have a time issue.
Well, nothing in the law about the time.
That's not, but in the RFP, there is. It, it's up to us to spec when we want it to, the service. And if they can't meet that, that limits it to whoever can meet it.
I'd like to hear what Mr. Hobbie says.
I have one question, which is why I came in here initially, because I wanted to ask Bill about the airport money. I'm trying to do the supplemental budgets.
Oh, yeah.
And if, if we add twenty-eight to forty thousand, I mean, I am in the emergency spot right now of before this budget year ends. Where I need to put that in is I have, I have my supplementals for the airport, which is, you know, right now, um, you know, thanks to Odd Six, thirty-six thousand dollars. We've expended and received. But if I write a check out or I put this in and I can't get it on a supplemental budget for this year, it's kind of.
So what does that mean mechanic? Because Odd Six is going to send us a check tomorrow if I ask them to.
And is, I think I'm on the agenda for the fourteenth with my supplementals. And that way I have a little bit more time to make sure that I, we have not exceeded our expenditures for the year in, in each fund. And, and we have, but of course, we have the revenue to back it up, but I do have to show that.
So the revenue comes in, when do you have to have the revenue to be squared?
The sooner the better, but I'm working on it right now, those supplementals.
See, I wanted, after this meeting, I was going to call Odd Six up and tell them to send whatever we do.
But let's say, let's say it ends up being, um, forty thousand. And so we get a twenty-eight thousand, um, donation. I don't think the fund balance at the airport could, could, could withstand that check.
It's, it's going to be six plus twenty-eight, it's going to be thirty-four thousand.
If they do the fuel.
No, that's the rental and then, then the fuel is nine. So.
Whatever that dollar is.
It'll be, it'll be forty thousand.
It's going to end up being a pass through.
Right.
Odd Six's portion.
And, and that part, that part.
We still need to have that.
But I'm not sure how much the airport fund can withstand.
So the balance between twenty-eight.
So are you saying we may need to allocate some general funds to the airport until the check comes in and then we can allocate it back?
Trying to understand the mechanics.
Well, and, and I, I don't know until I have the numbers. That, that's where I'm sitting. I have all this information that none of it is.
Well, when, when do you need and have it to be legally where you got to be? Is it the end of this month?
Legally, legally, it would be December fourth or fifth, whatever day we do that. I would have to do one more supplemental budget for the airport.
Okay, so we can, we can spec, we can specify the amount. That we know that, that, that it's going to take. And that's the window we put out on the RFP. And if somebody can meet that window, Odd Six will fund it. See, so, so I'll go add up what, what the rental cost was going to be. I'll add up what the fuel cost is. And I'll put in there the rent, the bringing in transportation charge. That's the window. That's what they were willing to pay for. That we can get them and I can have them send that now.
If it's a direct dollar for dollar pass through.
Well, what could happen.
We're good.
Well, it could happen that if, if they get it done sooner, then they'll save some money and we wouldn't need that much money. So do I ask for half of it initially or do I ask for, wait till we get, you know, the two weeks go by and we know exactly what we're paying? How would you like to see it?
And the two weeks would be fine, so we could get the exact, if it's, you know, thirty-eight thousand, two hundred. And I have my offsetting entries on, on a supplemental.
Okay, now let's take another scenario. Then what if, what if we ask for it all and it takes less? And I think Odd Six would be comfortable with us leaving it in a pot to be used in the spring. Is that possible to?
And, and that's absolutely fine because they are a fund. Anyone else, no, but a fund, yes.
Okay, that'd be the easiest way.
And, and so really the supplemental budget would be the difference between the actual cost of the project and what Odd Six is paying.
Do you know if, if.
If we can, yeah.
If I knew that exact amount, but if I didn't, I just need to make sure I'm not writing a check.
Right, but I'm saying that's why you would need to do the supplemental budget for the airport.
Right, because I've written thirty-six thousand dollars worth of expenditures that were not budgeted.
Right.
But now I have the revenue, so that would be the supplemental.
So it's a one, yeah.
All right, so that's easy.
The other question I have, Bill, is that twenty-eight thousand, did that include the scraper being brought up here?
No, I don't think so.
Back to the landfill, I'm saying.
Rusty said it was six thousand bucks to haul it in here. And I think the rental itself was twenty-six.
Okay, I thought that whatever we paid for the month, I thought included delivery.
I'll go verify that, but, but.
You know, he's right. It is because I think we split it between Roden Bridge and Rusty because they took it over from there.
That's right. Yeah, they had, uh, cut them.
Yeah.
So I'll get, whatever the cost is, Odd Six has agreed to pay it. So I'll, I'll just make sure we get the, the accurate amount, uh, that we're dealing with.
I agree. I would just, again, just read it, I said it before. I think the labor, if we do the labor, it's a sunk cost. I'm fine eating that. But if we go out to bid and we give it to another company, whatever the company charges us is what Odd Six ought to pay.
That's what they'll pay. And, and ideally.
Started.
That's right. That's, that's, that's where we are. That's where it was. Uh, and that's fair. And so there's a lump sum and let's say that sum's forty thousand. I don't care what it ends up being. That's the amount that we could have done it for. That's what they would, are willing to pay. So I'm going to go.
But here's what I'm not willing to do. Let me just, please let me finish. I'm not willing to say if we did it ourselves, Gary's cost of this, Gary Hyde's cost of this would have been, I'll make a number up, ten grand. Okay, so you just give us thirty and we'll match the other ten. Because I don't want to take funds out of balances that would, that only a sunk cost of.
You're right on the money. Sure, because Gary was already paid for. I agree.
Right, so if Gary does the job, I have no issue charging. I don't want to, it would be double dipping. Gary's already getting paid. If they reimburse us, that's inappropriate. But if we hire another company, they do the whole thing, they didn't pay the whole fee.
That's right.
In my opinion.
No, I agree.
I want to go back then because of what I started to talk about and got interrupted. If we take into account the local advantage. And if we take into account the wording that Clint just read about, is it the only known? That's a little ambiguous, but I'd say, okay, let's limit it to the county. And say, do we have a known entity in the county that would do it? Yes, then I'm saying maybe we don't have to put it out on bid.
But do we really know that? Do we really know Cyford?
I did. I did the research. I asked. That's why I ended up, and I was surprised. Because everybody told me nobody has a scraper and I started asking and Ed says, I do. And I only have thirty. Holy smokes. And he, and he, and he did the, the dollar story, you know, so he, he knows the big business.
There's no doubt Ed could do a wonderful job. That's not the issue.
So anyway.
The issue is the known.
Else in the county.
Well, it didn't say known in the county. Didn't have to be in the county.
We can limit it.
If we could, then I'm fine with doing that if we can do that.
You can limit it if you want a local advantage, uh, if that's, I mean, you don't have to put the bid out to anybody else.
But I don't want my behind toasted because we did not.
We want to make sure we're legally following the right process.
Shows up with a scraper and go, why didn't I have an opportunity to bid on this? And we did not put it out for bid. This will not be.
So what we can do, we can say, we can sell it.
How about an informal bid? That Armstrong, um, is each thing, if we, if you take them separately on, on, on the bidding process, it's less than five thousand, it's under twenty-five thousand. Each one is separate. And, and we said that Cyford, that everybody is going to be thirty thousand for the scraper. Well, Ed has that beat because it's not thirty thousand for him to rent the scraper. He has the scraper. Do, do you know what I'm saying?
Right, but we don't know if someone else maybe would do it and have the profit.
Right.
So they're willing.
Actually, somebody could go in and underbid it just to be, say, I'm, I want a shot at the next phase.
So let me just throw out a, a, a suggestion. How about we put it in both papers next week? Just put it out requesting bids to move X amount of yards of material. You know, see you or whomever for details. Bid due three, you know, Monday, because Friday would be that, they have the weekend to get it together. And at least we made the effort of putting it in the paper. And if someone says, I didn't have an opportunity, it was in the paper. Why didn't see the paper? That's your problem. Okay, but at least we put it out there.
Right, and we have a bids page on the website and.
Yeah, they look at that all the time.
And they do like a P H P and it pops it up and it brings up the specs on it where they can print the specs out.
See the website for specific specs.
And they just know what.
And you only have a very short window to do it. And that way I feel comfortable, we have met.
Yeah, it probably won't take much longer.
Letter of the Lord, the Spirit on the wall, which is more.
The only difference is, you're right, Ed could start sooner. And it, it doesn't matter as long as we got a window there to finish it before the ground freezes.
And I don't, in my line of thinking, I don't know that Armstrong needs to be involved, uh, they're not doing it.
No, but they've got a.
They did the staking.
To see, they've agreed to be our, without cost, and you, you know, odd six has already paid for their time and they put it in the in the contract that they'll work with us to do whatever. So we can get them with a a formatted RFP and say, here it is, here's what, and they know the the actual details, they can talk. Cubic yards and they can talk where it needs to be and and clarify questions.
And we have a couple of days to get this together, cause you know, the papers don't need to know. I think the TRIV News note, probably Tuesday.
Tuesday.
And probably Wednesday for the Sentinel. So we have tomorrow, Monday and Tuesday, if we made the phone call to Armstrong or if we did it ourselves. Then we can get Esvern to put it on um.
Yeah, let me, and that gives me time to talk to odd six too, to make sure that uh that they're good with the uh, the cap. See, we're in a cap this, what we would.
Now, wait a minute, where's this?
You can, you can put a job out knowing what you're gonna spend, you know, you can.
Well, we would get the, we would get the bids in or the one bid in, and then they have a right to say no.
Sure, that's what I mean. We've got.
So.
I wouldn't put a cap.
No, I wouldn't, we wouldn't publish a cap, but my point is Armstrong is gonna be willing to pay X.
So is the bid gonna go back to Armstrong then, or is the bid's gonna come to us?
Armstrong handles it.
So they're gonna, the bids will be sent back to Armstrong?
Yes. And we can ask them to uh.
It's ordinarily, it's just a little blurb that says Custer County is accepting bids for this. The RFP is located and Custer County does this.
And it has the instructions, it has the instructions on where they.
Return to the county commissioners. It's a closed bid to be opened at noon on whatever day, and it's really pretty, it's like thirty-four bucks to put it in.
Perfect, it's worth every penny of it.
And then all the real paperwork is on on the website, so if anyone's interested, they're just not.
And then with the, who to call for questions, which would be Armstrong.
And that, because that's what's hard is the RFP and I don't know anything about a cubic, anything, but nothing, and I'm trying to run it.
I like it.
Well, with that then, I think a motion to put out, this would be in order.
I move we put an RFP out to move the berm.
Okay, that's been moved to second to uh publish an RFP for earthwork of moving approximately.
Twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six thousand cubic yards of material at the airport. Further discussion? Bill, will you take the lead then on the RFP?
Yes.
Further discussion, hearing done, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose nay, or some carries.
Move that way adjourned.
It's uh, yeah, twenty-six, almost twenty-seven.
Is there a second? I'll second it. It's been moved to second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion, pose, motion carries.
This was such fun, let's do it.
It is fun.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this is really, it's a very, we work well because we have different opinions and then we can come to a consensus. Nobody's, I'm right, you're wrong regardless.
No, that's right.
So that works out really well.